This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, we're being recorded. I'd like to make sure everybody can hear. I know I've had some transmission problems. Aaron, would you just kind of acknowledge that you can hear me? Oh, thank you. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and children of all ages, to the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Laguna Vista, Texas, on June 24, 2001. I'd like to just go ahead and introduce those that are here. I see we have Richard Brown, and I think Julie Davis just joined us. Welcome, Julie. Don Jandro is present, and Larry Hagler, there he is, and Charles Solomon. Hi, Charlie. And Tom Monahan, our vice chair, and I'm Gary Zaleski, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also with us tonight, Roy Jamboor, the Director of Development for Laguna Vista. Aaron Sovere, our city attorney, and always, always a pleasure to have our city council liaison, David Williams. Thanks for joining us, David.
You're welcome.
So as we call the meeting to order, citizen comments for non-agenda items, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, the commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any item not on the agenda. Are there any public comments at this time? I'll just watch. I do not see any public comments. So if that's the case, we'll go ahead and get started with our public hearing and action and applications. If we'll kind of see if we have any issues with some background sound, probably until either you're recognized. You might want to just mute your mic during, you know, some of the some of the times because it's difficult for others to hear. Item number 1, 21-1844-SPE, consideration of a special exception application pursuant to section 11.60 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height by Table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 22 feet for a single-family residence at 20706 Harvard Cove, Highland Lakes Estate, section 15, lot 15062. And Roy, if you would take us through our staff report.
Yes, sir. Some of the members will remember that you approved this application somewhere between two and two and a half years ago. It wasn't particularly problematic then, and nothing has really changed about the application, other than the fact that they let it expire without requesting an extension. They did try and ask for an extension after the fact, but the reasons weren't particularly compelling. So that's why it's in front of you again. My understanding was is there was at least one point in time during the last week where they apparently, you know, took down the ridgepole, and we had to remind them to put it back up. Hopefully, that didn't impact too terribly many of you. I know it impacted at least one, one member, but even, even though I don't know that the ordinance, it says you have to visit the site. I don't know if it says you have to see the ridgepole or not, but I think that's certainly the implied intent. Unless you have any questions, in particular, the new members, the gist of the application is is that there's really only one section of this house that kind of wraps around the cove that is higher than is allowed, and it's kind of what I would call a bonus room over the top of the garage, although, you know, I'm assuming that's what it is. But we really don't have any floor plans to know.
Thank you, Roy. Any of the commissioners have questions for the staff at this time on this item number one? I don't see anyone. I guess the only, only comment that I would make, it's a little confusing here in Laguna Vista when we have certain areas that are at 15 feet, then we have others at 18 feet, and, you know, many of these that we deal with are at that 18-foot level. And I mean, this one in particular, we're only talking about a difference of four feet. Should it be in the 18 foot? So anyway, no questions for the staff. Is the applicant there to make a presentation?
I don't see any familiar names, but I could be wrong.
Well, I think there's a good possibility that, you know, this was, this was approved years ago, and unfortunately, it expired. I personally don't see any reason not to move forward with a positive. So if the applicant is not present, we will open the public hearing at 7:07. Any members of the public would like to make comments at this time? I'm looking to see if we get any kind of acknowledgement. Doesn't appear to be. If that's the case, then we're going ahead and close the public hearing at 7:08. Any discussion on the part of the commissioners? Oh, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I will abstain from comment and voting on this, on this property. I have not seen it with the ridgepole up.
All right. Thank you, Richard. I'm gonna just kind of cross you out there. Would someone like to make a motion?
Julie has a comment.
Yes, I would just like to comment to the two negative votes from the notifications that when you go out and you look at the property, from the two properties that had a negative opinion, you couldn't even see the ridgepole. So I like to just let them know that we really gave consideration to their input, but that you couldn't even see the property from those two properties. I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I think, I think sometimes we have a situation where even though this special exception permit has been around for quite a while, I think there's still a number of people that don't know that there is such a means for someone to be able to actually make the application to go beyond the, the build-by-right height. So I think it's just one of those things. And it's like Richard was saying, it's very important that people have, the commissioners have an opportunity to get out and actually see if some view is going to be obstructed. And I believe in Richard's case, the, it was down at the time when he tried to go out and see it. So, Tom?
I just have a question. I know Richard's abstaining, but I believe Richard was with us in the original application a few years ago, and since nothing has changed, is there an argument that says that he's already seen it, even though it's not this ridgepole at this time? He did see it a couple of years ago, and it's virtually the same plan as before. So.
It's, it's identical, actually.
Yeah. So I, I guess, unless Aaron has an opinion different, I don't think he needs to recuse himself.
If he has seen this project for this property, he wouldn't necessarily be, be required to recuse himself, but we can, there's nothing that prevents him from doing that if he feels like this, the ridgepole would have some impact on his decision-making this evening.
Can he comment, Richard, before we move on?
Given my recollection of it, which all came rushing back to me when I saw the washed-out street in front of it, I, I do recall having visited this site before and having voted in favor of the special exception that was previously requested. And I assume that I would vote in favor of it again today.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Would someone like to make a motion? Tom?
Um, for agenda item, for the first item on the agenda, 21-1844-SPE, I make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the height exception request from 15 feet to 22 feet.
All right. Ms. Davis? Oh, I'm sorry. Did Julie, did you second that? I was trying to... Or was that Larry?
I did.
Larry, Larry seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion at this point? Doesn't appear to be. So Julie, you vote?
Aye.
Yes? Don?
Yes.
And Larry, you seconded. I assume that's a yes?
Aye.
And Charlie?
Aye.
And Tom's, I assume yours is a yes, and the chair votes in the affirmative, and the motion carries unanimous. Richard, you did vote. Yes, I take it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number two, which is 21-1850-SPE, the consideration exception application pursuant to section 11.60 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height of Table A, chapter 14, from 15 feet to 21 feet for a single-family residence at 3301 Boone Drive, Highland Lakes Estates, section 9, lot 9134. Roy, if you would make the presentation for the staff?
Yes, sir. This application includes a couple of things that we would not be able to permit, as shown. The setback violation, he's aware of. He didn't seem to consider it much of a problem. He said he would make the adjustments when the time came. The one that we're more concerned about is he's shown a rather peculiar driveway geometry that, of course, we would not allow. And it makes you wonder, once he realizes we're not going to allow him to do that, whether it would not in fact push the residents further back towards the rear property line, which may or may not impact this application in terms of what he needs. It might actually reduce the requirement. But, but that's, you know, up to you guys. I mean, if you're willing to approve an amount if he needs less, that wouldn't be a problem. Along the same lines, as you may have noticed from the staff report, you know, the, the initial application and the initial drawings we got showed a bunch of different things, many of which were not consistent. And we had to, you know, query him on what he was actually asking for. The, the thing that's peculiar about that, of course, is that the ridgepole goes up first, and it makes you question how accurate that ridgepole is. Was it based on the, you know, applications? Were they, were, were they correct, notwithstanding the fact that the applications included confusing information? I had one person that, that's not on this commission go out and look at it, and, you know, they questioned the, the accuracy of the ridgepole markings, and I can see why they would. And like I said, but, you know, notwithstanding that, you know, there, there did not seem to be a huge impact on the views.
Go ahead, Tom.
Roy, if they get these corrected drawings and they have to push the house back for the driveway, would that result in increased height? Or be about the same?
I take it that's a question for Roy.
Yes. But he's muted. Right. I apologize. No, my opinion is it would probably more likely reduce it, but if it did increase it, he would simply have to come back because we, we don't give him a blanket approval. We give him an approval for an exact height increase and not, not any additional. Moreover, his, his reason for needing even as much as he did does is a little peculiar. We do limit the slope of, of the driveway. We actually limit it more than he acknowledged. It's well under 22%, but where we enforce that requirement is not on his property, but in the public right-of-way, which means, you know, once he's on private property, he can slope it as much as he cares to. So, you know, once he realizes that, realizes he can't do this rather strange driveway the way he has it shown, once again, all these would tend to suggest that the, that the, the need for height is less than what he's asked for, not greater. But if you approve what he asked for, you're protected. Anything more than that will require him to come back.
And Roy, I think this is kind of similar to earlier this month at our regular meeting, that one of the recommendations would be to approve the six-foot request for the height, but it's subject to the submittal of the corrected site plans as per the Development Department of Laguna Vista. Is that correct?
That would certainly make us more comfortable. You know, in the past, we approved one for additional height that had problems like this, and, you know, we fought for, you know, throughout the construction to get it corrected, and I'm not sure it ever was corrected.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Roy, in your notes that I recall, and I'm sorry I don't have them before me because my laptop isn't working right now, you had also mentioned that there were, there was not a total of 15 feet of side setbacks shown. I thought that the drawing only showed five feet on each side, and so it seems to me that that's another way in which the materials in the application before us are hard to reconcile.
Right. And I did bring that to the applicant's attention, and rather than give us amended drawings, he chose to just simply say, "Not a problem. I'll take care of it."
Well, I think it's a problem. The building isn't situated in the proper place on the lot. It is wider than that which is allowed under the ordinance for governed setbacks on the sides, and the driveway does not conform with our driveway ordinance. I, I do not feel as though this is a kind of application that is close enough and that will just let the development office take care of it later. I think the development office has got plenty to do with, and I'm not, don't mean to seem to speak for Mr. Jamboor, but to, for the commission to approve such a flawed application, it just seems to put extra work onto the development office, and I do not recommend it.
I guess, go ahead, Roy.
Well, and, and once again, just to remind that the, the commission, you know, it puts you guys in between a rock and a hard place. To make these things come back lengthens your agenda and creates work, too. You know, the real solution we want them to do is, is take these applications more seriously when, when they turn them in the first time. You know, I don't know how we do that, but...
Well, Roy, I guess in my opinion, we have, once again, yes, it's flawed, but this applicant cannot move forward with, you know, I see no problem with a, with the, an increase of six feet based on where that lot is. I mean, it's pretty obvious that there's oak trees in the back of that lot that go well above where the top of the house would be.
If we get the staff out, any of these issues would bring the height into jeopardy, we would have brought that to your attention, and that is not the case.
That's what, that's what I believe. And since it's our, our responsibility to either approve or deny based on the views and this increase of six feet, if it's all contingent upon them getting their plans, their setback, their driveway design requirements as it's outlined in one of our options in B, I kind of agree with you, Roy. You know, here we are with a special called meeting, and I know we're not getting any overtime pay for this one, but nonetheless, I would certainly be in favor with the condition that those things that you're outlining and requesting, Roy, be taken care of prior to any, any approval. Its approval is based solely on, you know, what is stipulated in the compliance with the plans that need to be submitted to the Department of Development.
And that does, in fact, burden the applicant. You know, they, they, they don't get into the queue for waiting to get their review. You know, we want him to take the application until we get those drawings. So it's not like they get to fix them in the drawings and apply. They get to fix them and then apply. So there, there are consequences. I don't know if they're sufficient enough to change the behavior, but there are consequences.
Well, they can't move forward with their plan unless they make the, you know, the corrected site plans. So personally, I don't have a problem with a six-foot increase as long as they get the plans that are required by your department, Roy. Any other questions, comments to the staff? I guess not. Then if that's the case, we will go ahead and ask for the applicant to make their presentation.
Doesn't look like Mr. Fraz is here.
Well, you know, in my mind, that, you know, trying to be extremely fair, I may have to go along with Mr. Brown's recommendation. All right. Applicant's not present. So let's go on with, to open this public meeting at 7:26. And take any comments from the public. I don't see any microphones lighting up. Well, if there's... We will go ahead and close the meeting at 7:26 with no public comment. I guess at this point, I would like to open, open it up to the commissioners for their discussion. Tom?
Yeah, I think I agree with Gary, your earlier argument. You know, we have the option to approve it contingent. Somebody mute their mic, please.
Yes, it's me, Grace Bar. I have a question about this rezoning. Could someone help me understand the difference? Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
Well, please mute your mic. Thank you. Anyway, I'm in favor of, I think it's item B in the summary, technical summary to, you know, it's contingent on them completing their application. From a height standpoint, to me, it was a pretty easy evaluation from, from that standpoint on impacts on views. So the applicant can't move forward without getting everything together. So we're going to at least get the height issue off the table, and, you know, so clear our agenda for the next item, I guess, next meeting or whatever, so we can come back to it.
Well, I, go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. Well, Tom, one thing that I would like to mention is that Mr. Jamboor has told us that he doesn't even know what height the applicant will finally request. So we don't actually know what we're voting for. He says he thinks that maybe moving down the hill will make it so that they don't have to request six feet, but moving down the hill may also make the site more flood-prone with that gigantic conduit right there in the adjacent lot. And I would... I think that there are too many uncertainties to just assume that the commission knows that six feet is the right height, and that if we approve the height, then everything can be tidied up later. I do not agree.
I guess my response to that would be that, you know, we're talking about six feet, and let's, let's just say that he gets his plan submitted as he's supposed to, and it turns out it's eight feet. He can't, he cannot move forward, and it wouldn't change anything other than if we deny it, we're going to have to hear it again. If it is six feet or less, and his plans are submitted and approved by the and approved by the development department, then we don't have to do this over again. So I mean, it's all contingent on, number one, it's only going to be six feet. And number two, for him to get approval of the six feet, he's going to have to submit what is required by Roy's department. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm a little disappointed that the applicant, you know, chooses not to, not to attend, but anyway. Yes, Richard.
Thank you. Well, on the other hand, the house now needs to be at least five feet skinnier. Making it skinnier may force more living area into the second floor, may change the configuration of the house. It surely is going to modify the floor plan. Floor plan, I know, is not part of our immediate consideration, except that you can't just cut five feet off of the existing floor plan. So ultimately, the design will be very different than what, what is before the commission today, both in where it will be sited on the lot, how the driveway will be designed, how wide it will be and also indirectly what the floor plan will look like in terms of fitting on the site. And the applicant is not here to answer any of that.
Well, I guess those are a lot of things that Roy would have to deal with. I know if I lost 40 pounds, I might have to get a smaller house, so anyway. Yes, Ms. Davis.
Just, just to the question of, is there any ability to make a requirement that if you ask for an exception, you need to attend the meeting?
Go ahead, Roy.
Well, we've certainly done everything we can to encourage it. I, I would defer to Erin to determine whether that's something that we could put in the ordinance, but I sent out an email today telling people about, you know, that they're, the, your recommendations that, that are being forwarded to city council and that it'll be a live meeting and they really do need to attend. You know, I didn't say they had to, I just said they need.
It just seems that, you know, maybe if they were required to go through this process, you know, we would, we're seeing a lot of the same developers and the same builders. And so it's like, how do we, how can we pull them into our process where we're not just always subject to them?
When, when I don't have enough time to give a very long answer, I tell them it's rude not to show up.
Okay, so Erin, can we require?
We would have to add it to the ordinance. If we added it to the ordinance, we could compel their attendance. We just don't have it in there right now.
I know there's been situations where we either have approved without them being present and we have denied, but it's usually been with some other specifics that were read into the record besides them just not being in attendance, since it's not required of them to be in attendance. I can remember, you know, two or three instances that went one way or the other with the applicant not being there.
So just as a, I think that maybe we should consider or discuss, you know, absence of this, of, of tonight, but just, you know, as a consideration moving forward.
Yeah, we could certainly put that on a future agenda item. Yes, Richard?
I'd like to defer to Ms. Alvera who has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You know, what I would say is that absent the, the noted questions, issues, deficiencies, needed clarification regarding whether or not any adjustment to the building either location or size to accommodate the proper setbacks or on the property, if, if, if the application had been perfect, meaning it showed a building, you had the, you had the exact elevations that would be used, showing that it would comply with our setback requirements and there was no concern about the driveway having an impact on the location of that. If those types of things didn't exist, I would recommend that you move forward and make a decision on the application because they are entitled to that.
Sorry, Erin, I'm not asking in response to my opinion on this one. I'm just saying in general, I already, I, I have my opinion on this one and I'm good. I'm just saying as a side note in general, so not, not on this vote, but just in general.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Erin, for your comments. I would like to say that the whole application shows a lack of consideration for the process, including the work by the commission. And I think that both the commission and the development office should try to compel people to pay attention to our, our ordinances. I, I can spend five or 10 more minutes with this thing a month from now. But maybe it'll provide some incentive to other builders and developers to, to realize that the commission's work and the application process should be taken seriously and not just, well, you don't really have to do all of that stuff. It's just, it's just there. Don't, don't pay any attention to it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion amongst the commission members? All right. If that's the case, then regarding item number 21-1850-SP-E, the consideration of a special application for a increase of six feet, 15 feet to 21 feet for the single family residence at 3301 Boone Drive be granted with the exception or the approved that this request is approved for that six feet for the additional height only if the corrected site plans are submitted to the Department of Development of Laguna Vista showing compliance with their side yard setback and driveway design requirements. I think that was kind of wordy. Erin, you think that's acceptable?
One, your statement was that it would be approved only if the corrected site plans were submitted. I, I think that might lend some question as to whether it's approved or not. If you are recommending approval subject to submission of it, it's clear that you're recommending approval and that those other things are, are still required. It doesn't make your approval conditional. That's, that's the thing you want to be clear about. You are approving the six feet.
Want to be sure that approval is contingent upon the submittal of corrected site plans showing compliance with the side yard setback and driveway design requirements. Okay.
Better, sir.
Is there a second? Seconded by Tom Monahan. It's moved and seconded. Is there a discussion to take place? See any discussion? All right. Mr. Brown, your vote is?
I vote no.
Votes no. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Davis votes aye. Mr. Jandro?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
And Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan? And Chair votes aye. Motion carries six to one. All right, moving on to item number three, 21-1858-SP-E, consideration of a special exception application pursuant to section 1160 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by Table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 21 feet for a single family residence at 21203 Warbonnet Cove Barque Ranches, plat 11, lot 11229. And Roy, if you would give us our staff presentation?
Yes, sir. This one is particularly perplexing. This is a piece of property very nearly directly across the street from the airport entry. It's a cul-de-sac that's across the street from one of them. The applicant was in a tremendous hurry. They were originally looking at building a container, a home made from shipping containers in order to reduce the, the length of time for the construction. My understanding is, is that that changed to a modular construction. You know, having said that, you know, there, there is no issue with the, the height for the most part. I mean, there, there is some impact, but it's not, it's not tremendous. The, the request is not huge. And the context is, is, is about as eclectic as you can get on that side of the airport with, with a lot of metal buildings and hangars and even the city's temporary modular building that's up there. Nonetheless, we were promised building elevations since the, the deadline of the application and we still don't have them. And we didn't even hear from anybody this week. Now, that, that does, doesn't seem to coincide with their being in a hurry. Now, there is a requirement, since this is a, you know, single family residential zoning district, that there, if they're going to use a modular construction, they have to provide an appraisal that shows that it meets both the state statutes and the local requirements in that regard. The, certainly the contractor was aware of that, that now the applicant is aware of it. We've told it to them several times. I don't think that is, you know, why that we don't have any building elevations. I think it's more whether they, they found the time to provide them. We, we've informed them of that requirement since the day we received the application.
Thank you, Roy. Any of the, Tom, you want to go first?
Yeah, I guess, you know, that it seems like height wouldn't be an issue here, but I don't even know how that house is going to sit on a lot to make an evaluation and do we even know if the ridge pole's in the right place? There is some elevation a lot behind it that may make it moot, I don't know, but seems like maybe the placement of the house is important so that we have a proper setting of the ridge pole because we don't, do we know anything about where the house is going to sit to know that's in the right place or not?
I, I have my doubts, but, you know, I looked at it, you know, based not where the ridge pole was, but based on the, the topographical information I had and putting it, I, I kind of personally moved it to where it needed to go. And I still couldn't come up with a, a much of an impact on the height. Like I said, my real issue is how do you pretend, you know, as easy as it would be to discount the, the context, how do you pretend that we have elevation drawings? I don't, I don't know that you can. But I'll leave that to Erin.
Can't.
Any other questions for Rich, Richard, were you wanting to make a comment or ask Roy some questions?
I'll, I'll reserve my comment for when the commission discusses. Thank you.
Well, I've, I mean, is, I want to thank you, Roy, for keeping us informed on this particular project and I mean, I can't even imagine us approving something like this without any, without anything there at all, so. Yeah. Yes, I see your expression, Mr. Brown. Maybe you want to just turn your camera off. So anyway, without any plans at all and comments from the Director of Development, in my personal opinion, I, I don't see how we could move forward on this without just a denial. Any, any other comments back to the Director of Development? No?
Yes, yeah, I have a, I have a comment.
I'm sure you do.
Thank you. Mr. Jambor, are, no, no documents harder or easier for you to work with than totally flawed documents?
It, it, it depends what documents are missing. You know, believe it or not, the best documents you get, you'd be shocked how much time I spend making them legible. They, they don't show up in our office that way. I Photoshop every one of these drawings. There's, there's not a lot of effort involved. But that's, that's not for their benefit, that's for your benefit. I want you to have a clear, as clear an understanding of what you're looking at as possible. That's, you know, but like I said, this is more of a, a requirement you ignore. It's, it's kind of like somebody showing up without a ridge pole. You know, to me, it's, it's almost that fundamental, even though, like I said, I don't, to me, it would be impossible to, to propose something that, you know, was out of context with that area. But you can't ignore the idea that you haven't seen it. I, I don't see how you, I don't see how you can make that leap.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the staff? I don't see anything there. Then we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation.
Jim, Mr. Chair, I, I don't see them in the room. I would have reminded them had I gotten an email, but you know, quite frankly, I just didn't have any more time to email everybody today.
Thank you, Roy. With the applicant not being present, we'll go ahead and ask for any comments from the public starting at 8:59. No, I'm sorry, 8:49, excuse me.
7:49.
7:49, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry. Just getting, I'm just getting so far ahead of myself. It must have, must have been when I had to spring forward. All right, 7:49, we'll open the public hearing. Don't see any of the public really jumping in there. And it's now 7:50 and we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, move on to, uh, any discussion about this residence, proposed residence on, uh, Warbonnet. Tom?
I mean, it's kind of, uh, um, what's the term? The, the project documents are kind of vaporware right now because there's nothing at all. And to, to even look at, so maybe we either continue for next meeting or I guess, uh, deny it tonight?
Thank you, Tom. Any other further discussion? Larry?
My topic is when a person doesn't submit what I, what miss, the development department has considered a complete application, how far should he go with that before he even brings it to us? Um, I know for a fact he spent a lot of time on this. We've gotten a lot of emails, uh, including at about one o'clock in the morning. Seems like there's got to be a draw a line and say if he can't provide the proper data, it doesn't go any further. Now, Mr. Jamboor may or may not agree with me, and he's the one that's doing all the work.
Well, I'll be honest with you, yeah, I mean, we got a commitment. There were, you know, they were, you know, professing, uh, an urgency to their application. You know, I won't invade their privacy and share all the reasons, but they seemed pretty legitimate, but, uh, it seemed like, uh, what their intent was is to impose the urgency on everybody except themselves or their contractor. Uh, but we, we got a commitment that we would get them about a month ago. And I did get an email, and I advertised it on that basis. I opened the email and it contained no building elevation.
Well, those of you who might have, uh, had an opportunity to visit the site, uh, there's a very nice, uh, large placard with their pictures and uh, pictures of their, uh, unborn child that they're going to welcome in January to their new house and I, I, uh, I, I can see, uh, you know, a lot of good intentions, uh, like Roy's described, but you know, what they say about, uh, good intentions and, uh, what happens to them on the road. So, uh, any, uh?
I have one comment. There's not enough information here to grant the, what they've requested.
Uh, thank you, Charlie. Anyone else at this time? Uh, I'm not sure. I see somebody, uh, somebody raising their hand. We've already closed the public hearing. It's a Darren. Sorry, sorry, Darren.
Ginther, but if you close public hearing, that's fine. It's, it's not important.
All right, th- thank you. Tom?
I just quickly refresh my mind. I guess a question for Roy if, if we're to not deny this tonight, then when, when is the applicant allowed to come back with it?
Oh, they, if you deny it, it, they get to wait a year. If you defer it, you, you've given them thirty more days, but I can assure you, uh, you know, even though we'll list it on the agenda, uh, we won't do any work, additional work until we get the drawings.
Okay.
So, uh, ju- just to clarify, Roy, so we, we could end up in the same spot again?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, I, I could show you that, all the emails with all the promises. Uh, and like I said, they, they sent an email when they promised to. It just didn't include any building elevations. It, they're, they're, they also had a, originally, a, a building that was encroaching in a front yard setback. They thought that was not a problem. You know, I kind of informed them that, you know, this board didn't have the right to grant the variance, and I couldn't imagine why they needed it. And sure enough, uh, the revised drawings that we got the next day showed the deck getting smaller. So, but that, that, that was, they came in a big zip file, and I presumed that what I got was what was promised. I was wrong.
So, uh, any, uh, further discussion on the part of the, uh, commission? All right.
So, this, this is just a question of, uh, I guess, strategy, so to speak. If we were to defer this to next month, could that deferral say that the hearing next month is contingent on getting the documents within the next two weeks? So that we know if we have something to go by for the next meeting? Or before you have to publish it?
Would not have to republish, sir, if you defer and continue.
Okay, all right.
The, the only issue would be, you know, and we would post it on the agenda, is just whether you even bothered to call it. You may remember in the past, we've simply noted in red that we listed on the agenda, don't call it.
Okay.
Richard?
Thank you. Uh, isn't it possible to defer it without a date certain? Just defer it without any certainty that it would, that the commission is, uh, committing to having it on next month's agenda? I mean, isn't, isn't it true that next month's agenda is only two weeks away from now anyway?
Right. Well, you could certainly defer it date certain for a month and two weeks, uh, if you chose to. If you, if you simply defer and continue it, I'll defer to Aaron, but I think that means we just, we put it on every agenda until you take it off.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend that you def- either defer to it. It, it would be more appropriate to defer to a date certain. That way, one, um, Roy has enough, has some information and the applicant would have information. They would know that this item's coming back up, and it could create the situation where they understand the urgency of providing the required documentation. At the end of the day, they've submitted an application, they're entitled to a decision. If they haven't provided the proper documents, then after being given the opportunity to provide the information that's required, they, if they choose not to do that in the time that you allow for it, then you're required to deny it. It, that's, they are entitled to a decision. Um, whether they provide you what you need to make a decision that allows approval or not is, that is the risk they're taking. So, i- in that context, to avoid having applications held in limbo for un, um, specified amounts of time, I recommend you, if you want to defer, defer to a date certain out far enough that would give them time to get the documents in and, uh, and an opportunity so that you can make a, an informed decision.
Well, and I'm not trying to make an excuse on their behalf, but remember, we're talking about, you know, a modular constructed building, and they're kind of at the whim and mercy of the supplier of that building to provide the information. It's not something that they can provide on their own or get somebody else to do it or any of those things. They are one hundred percent dependent on that individual, and he just hasn't delivered his promise.
Thank you, Roy. Uh, anyone else at this time? Any further discussion? If not, then I will go ahead and make a motion that regarding item number two-one dash one-eight, uh, five-eight dash S-P dash E be deferred until the, uh, scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista for the twelfth of August, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
It's been s- seconded. Any further discussion? I would just a- ask someone to verify that is the, uh, second Thursday in August. Appears to be, uh, moved and seconded. If, uh, we could, uh, take the vote on, uh, any furth, I guess we asked for further discussion. Uh, Julie, did you have a comment?
No, sir.
Oh. Richard, uh, your vote?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Jondro?
Oh. Aye.
Thank you, Don. Uh, Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Solomon?
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Carries unanimous to, uh, deny. I, I'm sorry, to to defer until, uh, the meeting of, uh, August the twelfth. If we could, uh, we'll start with, uh, item number four, which is, uh, two-one dash one-eight-five-nine dash R dash R-E-Z. Consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning district change from, uh, L-one light industrial and R-dash-one-B, single-family residential to C-dash-four airport commercial and/or RR-dash-A, restricted, uh, single-family with aircraft for the property in the Barque Ranches subdivision, section fifteen A, east of Rolling Hills Trail and north of Rawhide Trail. A complete legal description for each property is available upon request. And, uh, Roy, if you want to get us started here?
Yes, sir. Uh, and, and, and some of the commissioners may remember this. It was actually before I arrived, but it was immediately before I arrived. And it was pursuant to both the, uh, recommendation of, in, in the comprehensive plan that was kind of mimicked in, in a document called the Airport Action Plan that was approved on the exact same night that this zoning ordinance change occurred. But in, in short, what it did was recommend that, uh, uh, the area around the airport was not particularly appropriate for single-family residential. And they used the term industrial, but it's very clear from the context of the recommendation that you understood they were talking about the type of businesses and construction that was already prevalent at the airport. Now, having said that, the recommendation actually included both the east and west sides of the airport. Uh, the, the west side of the airport was kind of limited to the area, uh, to the north of the, the city limits and didn't go very far to the west. Uh, the area to the east of the airport was, the recommendation was to, to change everything north of Rawhide and east of the airport all the way to the city limit lines. Nonetheless, what, what was brought to this commission and then subsequently to the city council was a portion of that, about two blocks, actually. And, uh, it was changed to the light industrial zoning district. Uh, like I said, since we've been here, uh, we have had a number, uh, a, a huge number of applications for uses that were clearly not what was intended by that recommendation. Scrap yards, open lay-down yards, uh, you know, uh, stor- open storage of, of personal household items without a building, a, a number of those things. And it became really quickly apparent to us that it was not intended that the, uh, that it be literally, the, the reference to industrial did not intend for it to be a zoning district. They intended it to be similar to what was already there. And we brought that to the, you know, some of you may or may not know, until recently, I moonlighted up at the airport. So, I had brought that to their attention in, in years past. And there was simply a delay until now into getting a formal request in front of this board to, uh, or the city council, either one, to initiate this application. And Mr. Monahan stepped up to the plate a couple of months ago, and we brought it, uh, as a future agenda item, uh, to be discussed a- at your last meeting. And you may remember that, uh, a Realtor and some other property owners showed up and asked you to extend the request to include the rest of the property east of that light industrial district all the way to the city limits and consider some similar sort of change there that would open up the opportunities for housing that was not as restricted as a single-family district uh, is currently in, in Lago Vista. And, and to quote their use of a term, they wanted the ability to, to build barn-to-midiums as residence, which would be, it's not that it's prohibited in that zoning district now, it's just much more difficult than it would be with that zoning change. Uh, I don't know if I've done a good job of explaining it, but since you guys heard it last month, uh, I just assumed spend the rest of the time for questions. We had an awful lot of interest in, in this application. Uh, some understood, some not understood, but I suspect we're going to need to devote some time to that. There, there is one other thing I should mention. Uh, the, the C-four zoning district, uh, makes a mention of, 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 of hangars and things like that. Uh, and, and there, it's actually a, a, already a problem with the, some of the RR-A property on the west side of the airport. We would recommend that if you forward something of this nature, uh, to the council as, as recommending approval, that we would do a minor text amendment to both the C-four and RR-A district that says you only have the right to build a hangar if you have platted access to a taxiway or a taxiway easement. That, that's, that's a problem that's up there now, and we think it needs to be corrected.
Go ahead, Tom.
Roy? And I guess, um, we'll get to comments, maybe some airport folks can chime in, but you know, I was, I was looking at the map on PDF page one-oh-six, just to have, see the kind of zoning now. Just picture it. And the area in purple is light industrial. And then there's a green hash area, kind of green with hash marks through it to the east. And so is the preference to have both a purple area and the green hash area to become either C-four or RR-A? Or is it splitting it up to where C-four would be the purple area and RR-A would be the stuff further to the east?
The way I would answer that, uh, and, and I would defer to the people that were here in two thousand and sixteen, uh, the recommendation was to rezone more of that light industrial or they, they, they use the term industrial, whatever you thought that to mean. I'm not sure why they chose to only do a small portion of that. Uh, we don't have a strong feeling, one way or another, about how much C-four or how much, if it makes you more comfortable to change the, the stuff that's R-one-B now to RR-A with the stipulation that you only get to build a hangar if you have platted access to it, to an easement or a taxiway easement. You know, that, that is certainly a valid response to that. Uh, you know, I would, I would question, you know, why, why did the, this thing get only partially done? And if I knew the answer to that, I could probably answer your question better. But I am, I'm But I am, I'm in the meantime, imagining that there was some hesitancy, you know, to go all in on this. Now you have what I might call a, a lot of support from the people that own that property to now develop it and perhaps develop it in a way that attracts a certain market. You know, i.e. what they call barn dominiums. And that's not an absurd idea, in our opinion.
So R R A will give you the barn dominiums.
Yes, sir. And a hangar, just, it doesn't give you a business right. The C four gives you all three rights.
Oh, see, you can build the barn dominium with C four as well?
Yes, sir, but it, you, you can also put a business in C four. You can't put a business in R R A unless it's a home based business. You can qualify for that, but. If I may, it wouldn't be the commercial type quasi industrial uses that are in the C four. And having said that, by the way, you know, the, the staff's issue had more to do with, you know, get rid of the inappropriate, you know, light industrial uses. If there are additional uses that belong in the C four that are not in the, the, I mean, that are in the L light industrial district that are not in the C four, there's nothing to keep you from adding that and, and increasing those uses, if that's appropriate. We're, we're more worried about the inappropriate uses that will probably stifle development. That, that's our concern.
And that's the industrial, Roy?
Yes, sir, the, the livestock, the, the scrap yards, uh, maybe even RV parks is, is certainly questionable. We, we've had some, it's not that you can't do one up there, uh, but you need a lot of property to do it. The, the, the people that have considered doing it have tried to do it on, on a handful of lots and they couldn't meet our development standards and, and, and get the use. You know, we, we've had, we've had people show it to us. But, uh, you know, the, the uses that I highlighted in yellow in the packet, those are certainly the ones that raise eyebrows if, if the ideas for this area to develop.
Any further questions of the staff from the commissioners? Yeah, Don?
Um, I just have a, a bit of a difficult time uh, understanding how you could have R R A on like, for example, Ramrod or Red River Cove. If you have to have a hangar as a part of it.
Well, and that, that's what I mentioned. We, we think that ought to be changed to said, you can only have a hangar if you have access to a taxiway.
Okay, and?
That's, that's a change we would recommend uh, at, before this got adopted by council or before the effective date of this ordinance.
So in other words, that area would be best served to continue to be R one B or something along that line? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, but, but I would also call your attention to that airport action plan. And we have developed, we have talked to developers uh, who were amenable to the idea of extending a taxiway east and rerouting the streets. It's, it's not like the idea that, uh, that's not going to happen or whatever. The city has been anxious, willing and able to, you know, do a public partner, uh, private partnership and even, you know, uh, help get access to grant funds to, to make that sort of thing happen. What, what we have kind of resisted is the idea that the, that the city would speculate, if you will, with taxpayer money. You know, on that sort of thing all by ourselves.
And from the point of view, you know, of, of somebody that's dealing with a little bit of real estate, it, it's always difficult to understand how you can do something up, up there without a source of water sewer, so yeah, it's always tough for me to fit in my head.
My understanding is, is that, uh, there are people that are going to extend water and sewer a little bit further and it will be a little less expensive than it has been in the past. And, and certainly the people that, that you saw last month, uh, I don't think any of them have utility estimates in front of them yet, so I don't know how informed they are about the cost.
Well, you know, clearly with the, the fervor and the frenzy that's going on right now uh, with the acquisition of lots and, and so on and so forth in this area. If, if it were possible, all of that area would sell out residential immediately. I mean, but that doesn't mean problem.
You might, let me point out something to you, okay? And I don't know why this wasn't pointed out before, but I can tell you this. Uh, I don't think you'll ever hear a qualified planner that tells you that light industrial and, and single family residential are, are compatible uses that should share a property line. And that's exactly what we have right now.
Exactly.
That, that, what you have now is what we question. Where you go from here, we're kind of open to that.
So I guess what you're saying. Uh, I'm sorry, Don, I would just.
No, that's, that's.
I guess what I'm hearing is that we make, uh, we make this particular change so that we don't mix this, uh, light industrial, industrial. And we can make adjustments later down the road to clarify uh, what can and cannot be in there. You know, just like this barn dominium, uh, somebody decides to put a taxiway in and reroute a road. To me, makes an awful lot of sense. You know, there's a lot of people that have some beautiful places up there by the airport uh, that they have as residents, as well as a hangar for their aircraft, so. Anyway, that's just quick little snippet from.
The original impetus of this application was the fear of the light industrial. But the lady showed up, she asked y'all to include that area. And, you know, it's, you kind of wonder how come they left it the way it was in 2016. No doubt that, that's, you know, it didn't hurt anything to talk about it, I'll put you that way.
Other comments or questions for the staff? And I guess the, uh, yeah, Tom.
I'm trying to get this. You know, my, when I look at things on here, I can see changing light industrial to C four, then that other area seems R R A. To me, since, I mean, it looks like the lots based on the graphics we have in the packet. You know, that those are plotted lots, plotted lots. You know, looks, it just looks so much more residential than you wouldn't want C four in that area, but, but I, I don't see where C four, at least what you have in the packet. I'm trying to look at the allowed uses under C four, and I don't see where homes are included.
It's not listed in the table of uses. What, what there is is a text line that says you can put a residence in C four use, but you have to inform the development services department. Now, we, we're kind of upset that we got a lot of those that haven't informed the development services department, but that line is in the, the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So does it make sense to you to, to say that the, the area closest to the runway and, and highlighted in purple color should be light industrial and then R R A for the stuff further east?
That may, that, there is certainly an argument for that. That, that's why we advertised it as loosely as we did. You know, and or giving you the option to clarify your recommendation that we forward to city council. And of course, they can ignore you too, so. We know that. But, but we wanted to open it up to this discussion. Like I said, our overriding fear is that particularly as, as, uh, growth and development in this area increases, uh, we fear for our ability to fight off some of these inappropriate uses. You know, it's, it's, it's been a challenge.
Okay. Well. I see Glenn Chappie's on, so I'm guessing, uh, you're probably have an opinion.
I suspect he's the one that's been, it took him so long, but I kept telling him to show up and it would go quicker, but.
I, I know it was my time to speak, thank you, Tom. Um, I'm the chair of the airport advisory board for the city. Uh, the interest in the airport advisory board, we've actually brought this issue to city council um, about a year ago in, in the second March meeting of 2020. We would, the airport advisory board, um, basically supports the idea that single family residents adjacent to an airport could be a long-term threat to an airport. Um, that was brought to us by techs dot, techs dot engineers. Um, the city several years ago, as Roy has said, decided to take some of that land, the stuff you see in purple and create it to light industrial. The light industrial zoning, turns out, I'm not a zoning expert, no one is a zoning expert. We didn't recommend it to the zone planning and zoning at that time. But it ended up being light industrial. The airport advisory board's interest and recommendation and request to the city and request to P and Z has been to change that light industrial to a different zoning to which the city would have controls to not, to be able to avoid, uh, uses that would be detrimental to our city. No one wants to live next to a junkyard or a boat junkyard or a scrap metal yard or a cement plant that might be allowed under light industrial. Um, so the, the area in purple is our, was our primary consideration. The airport advisory board has not considered the R one B to, uh, transition, uh, area there that you see to the east of that purple. Bottom line is, that's up, that's up to you all, but in general, we'd like to see uses for that property that are, preserve the airport. We don't want to end up in a situation some years down the road where people are complaining over noise and things like that. Doesn't make any sense. Any, any questions from, from our point of view? I mean, I am an airport resident and I'm one of those people who lives up here, so.
Uh, I, I guess just, uh, for clarification, uh, have, uh, is, Aaron, are we with, with Glenn, uh, coming in there? Is that, uh, should have been opening the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna just, uh, Glenn, that's okay, but I didn't see any other comments coming forward at that time. So I'm gonna backtrack us to, uh, eight, uh, twenty-one that we opened the public hearing. And, uh, we're continuing with, uh, an open public hearing at this point, so. Tom, did you have?
Yeah. I had a question for Glenn, so. If we made that stuff east of recommended changing, uh, east of, uh, Running Brook, that area. If we change it to R R A, they would tie that area closer to the airport itself, right? Because it would give, it'd give people in there options to use the airport if, if, uh, taxiways are built or whatever.
It, 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 it really doesn't at this time, and that's because of the way the FAA looks at a funded airport. The city could create zones and taxiways back to that and allow development. A developer could partner with that, but today, the access would be to the air, to a federally funded airport, which we are, um, would be that, uh, un, it, it is not laid out for a, a taxiway at this time. So those lots would not be able to taxi down a street, for example. That, that, that becomes a, an agreement between some future, uh, agreement called through the fence agreement. Um, and that type of, that type of property today or, or access, uh, mechanism is, is not planned or provided for today. It could change, the city could make it change, we could all make it change. It could be quite a development over there, but the lots in general, Tom, are small.
Yeah.
Airplanes are big. It would be unlikely that anybody on one lot could pull it off.
Right. So. So, uh, if we just dealt with the purple area to change that and didn't address the properties east of Running Brook, you'd be all right with that, Tim?
Well, if this is a public hearing, I'll, I'll put my public hat on. Um, yes, we would, we would, we definitely want to address the light industrial purple areas. We want that fixed. It's, it's right now much too loose and could make a, a, an ugly, an ugly part of Lago Vista. We're not interested in that, we want it fixed. As far as whether or not you go to R R A and those other properties, I, I personally have no objection to somebody building a, um, a, a barn dominium style pro, property over there. We would, we would like for those properties to have some sort of, and maybe it's a new zone, I don't know, I'm not a zoning expert, but properties around the airport really should be identified as you're buying a property around an airport. So if you have an opportunity to do that, it's not a bad idea long-term.
Mr. Chairman? Along those lines, uh, one of the recommendations that we had a long time ago that didn't go anywhere was an overlay district over there that said that, uh, you're either going to use extraordinary soundproofing on your house or you will provide a navigation easement that acknowledges that you know it's an airport and that you're not going to make a claim that you're chased out of your house because of the noise. And, uh, I still thought that was a good idea, but maybe it, it kind of died down, but maybe it'll come back up. But we, we made that comment in the staff report for the Rolling Hills, I mean, excuse, the Warbarn. To the best of my knowledge, uh, uh, modular housing is not particularly soundproof. So that, that, I mean, it's exactly the concern we had.
You have a question, this is the public meeting part of it, right?
Uh, it is.
Okay, all right.
If you could identify yourself and your address.
Introduce yourself, please.
Fleet Stevenson.
Your address?
Okay.
Yeah, Fleet Stevenson, seven nine fifty-four, Flonzo, Texas.
He owns a property on Ranger Trail, a lot.
Uh, I'd like to know if fifty percent of the residents don't want this change, will the change still happen?
Uh, actually, in, in, I'm taking Eric's, uh, Aaron's place. If we have written comments, uh, from property owners, uh, you know, within the notification area, and at least twenty percent of them by volume object, it takes a super majority for the city council to make that change. I, I think that's the limitation, so it's less than fifty percent, I guess, would, would be the. So, and, and we will continue to receive those comments up until the time the city council acts.
Just for clarification for these. Is Ranger Trail in the purple area? Uh, is, is Ranger Trail in the purple area that you've been referencing?
Yes, yes. Ranger Trail today is in the light industrial.
Because I received. Yeah, I received my paperwork, only, I sent it, I received it one day and sent it off the next day, so that's why.
If I'm not mistaken, Glenn, in one side of the street, light industrial, and the other's not?
Roy, I'm switching back. It's very, Ranger Trail is squarely in the middle of that purple area. It runs right through the middle. Rolling Hills Trail and Ranger Trail is the next street over.
Got you. Yeah, you're right. It's on both sides. It's, it's Running Brook is, is where.
That's correct. Running, Running Brook Cove would be the, the border between the purple area and the potential change for residential of some other kind.
And Mr. Stevenson.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It looks like, Darren.
I, I, I think we've had some.
No, we are good, so.
Transmission. I hope their question was.
We're still here. Just lost video, that's all. We're still here. We can hear you.
Oh, good. I, I think, I.
Yes, yes, you answered the question. We can hear you just a little bit.
Okay, I think it comes through clearer when it's just the audio. That's where the problem might be in connection.
Yes, we'll stay off the video. Yes. Correct.
All right.
It's like Mr. Darren has a question. Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledgement. I'm Darren Ginther. I, I've been in Lago residence for more than a decade, although I'm not out there right now. I own property off Ranger Trail. I own a large lot out there and partners of mine own adjacent lots. I've also been a pilot for more than thirty years, and I'm in general agreement with Glenn and the Airport Advisory Board. I think the scope of this is two blocks east is generally appropriate. Lago has a lot of undeveloped property that's farther east, and it looks to me like with the cost of lots, residential lots, that, that it's headed that way. As an owner, I've got to tell you that the rezone here was not really specified. It said C4, RRA, and, and those are two vastly different things for me. Of the two possible rezones, C4 is much more flexible and consistent with what I bought that lot for. I also agree with what we're trying to prevent here. There's already some open lot storage and, and basically junkyards on the east side of Lago Vista that are out of consistency with what everybody wants here. And C4, I acknowledge, solves a problem of removing those open lot storages. I would say the one thing that's out of alignment of C4, one of the uses that we've considered is a, a private RV park, and, and part of what we've considered that for is because the POA has reduced use for large and expensive RVs like I own. I believe the RVs over thirty-five feet are no longer allowed. And there's some synergy between RV owners and, and aircraft owners in terms of owning expensive toys. We don't want to put junk up there. We don't want to build trailers, but with the POA restricting access to large rigs, you guys might consider that. I disagree with restricting the access to build a hangar because airport access through the fence may change long-term. And I really don't know the, the difference between a hangar and a barn dominium. One has a garage door and one has a hangar door, but, but what's the difference to local residents? I hope there is long-term through-fence access. All of the lots that are on the airport are a hundred thousand dollars plus. They're a great tax basis. They attract great residents that all spend money in the community. Supportive of Barn Does, the other comment I'd have is, somebody asked about utilities. Water and sewer is already on the east side of the airport. What's prohibiting Lago residential growth to some degree is the fact that Lago has disallowed wells, which only leaves water collection as an option. And if that were to change, power is already to the east. You can add septic. I think you'd see residential activity out there. The only question I really have for the committee is, what happens to those lots that are already being used for open lot storage? If you guys change zoning on them, are they grandfathered, or what happens to those owners? I, I'm not one of them, but I'm curious.
They're, they're non-conforming. They, they, they would stay there till abandoned. They cannot expand or anything like that, but they, they basically, we can't chase them out, but, you know, the, the way it's designed, it eventually, in theory, they would go away.
Do any of you guys, as I'm a pilot and have a vested interest out there, have any questions for me on, on my opinion of C4 versus RRA or uses around RVs and, and so forth?
I'd like to understand your opinion between the C4 and RRA.
So to, to my understanding, C4 allows a much smaller residential footprint within a hangar or a barn dominium. So I could have a barn dominium that's, say, four thousand square feet, has a living area minimum of seventy-eight hundred, and that's consistent with some uses that are already up there. You guys don't know what's in those buildings because you probably haven't been in many of them, but there are quite a few large hangars up there with relatively small residential areas, and some of them are absolutely beautiful on the inside. RRA requires a much larger residential footprint, if I have that correct, and somebody correct me if I'm not right.
It, it, it doesn't allow commercial use, other than a home-based business.
And I get that distinction, and I'm saying there is a, a great deal of benefit in, in allowing a smaller residential space. There's some of us that would like large workshops and relatively small living areas. Doesn't mean.
Can I chime in here? Can you hear me?
I'd like to, first of all, if, if that's, there was some real strong feedback coming from your microphone, Jeff. I believe we can go ahead and recognize you at this point if you give your name and address for the record.
Okay. Are you hearing me better now?
Just fine. Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm having real bad connection here. I'm having to set my truck and do this. My name is Jeff Klein, and I am the owner of I-106, 105, 104, and 101, which are on Ranger Trail and Rolling Hills. And I'm mostly in agreement with, with the last speaker there. I think his name was Darren. But I think C4 was much, much better in the purple area, and then RRA in the already designated, the, I think it was the yellow and green hash marks. Because some people might want to put a business in there and you really restrict what you can do in there if you do RRA in those areas.
Thank you.
This is Dennis Fenswall.
Yes, go ahead, Dennis. Identify your address.
This is Dennis Fenswall, and I own a lot over on Ramrod Trail. I'm currently in Everest, Kansas, under a tornado watch, so hopefully I get through clearly. I'm also a retired airline pilot, and I agree very much with most of what Garen Ginther was saying. And I was curious about the planning documents that show the area south of Rawhide Trail becoming City Park. Is, is that the plan, and the area north of, of Rawhide to become the C4?
You want to address that, Mr. Monahan, or you want me to?
Go ahead, Roy. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. We, we do an annual update to the comprehensive plan. We do a summary and report. And quite frankly, that, that is a, a recommendation that maybe we don't completely think is viable at this time. It, it doesn't get removed. It just gets labeled as being not a priority or not a, a present intent. Some of that same area that's labeled park involves closing of streets and things that would involve regulatory takings, and we just don't think the demand for a park up there would justify that type of public expense. And so the answer is, it's, in our current summary, that recommendation is, is far less prominent. That might be the safest way to put it.
Okay, it has a relatively calm, recent date on it of six twenty, or six seven, so, of this year. That's why I was, I was wondering why. I haven't been keeping close tabs on what's happening. I bought this property quite some time ago, but now that I've just recently retired, I'm, I'm thinking about moving back down there and would like to get access to the airport and.
Yes, sir. That, that, all that, that's a snapshot of, of our future land use map. The six seven just is the date that the gentleman prepared the map.
Okay.
The, the, the future land use map that it takes a picture of was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. Is that correct, Tom? I, I think that's correct, but we, we, we've done two annual updates in the last three years. So that, we, we put that recommendation low, way down low on the pile. I'll put it to you that way.
Okay. Like I said, I haven't been keeping track of what's been happening there, so I was surprised that all these changes have been made already. I thought it was all residential zoned, and now I'm, I'm seeing commercial, well, this light commercial. And I agree that that's inappropriate, having the C4 so that it is perhaps like the Spruce Creek in Florida, having, you know, aviation-interested parties being, entering in and around the airport. I'm, I'm quite aware, I've been in the aviation business for forty years, that neighbors move in and then they shut down airports.
Thank you very much, Dennis. All right, is there anyone else to comment during this public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to speak too more about the, the utilities there. About a year ago, I put in for an application to have the utility assessment there about water and sewer. And, and as far as I know, the area there, as it comes across that where the hangar, the tie-downs are at now in the airport, that's about the closest route across there, and it's in the utilities over there. I mean, once the first, I, I would probably have been the first person, my lot, I think, is the closest to getting there. The, I think it's the I-106, and it wasn't so imperative, it wasn't so onerous that I couldn't afford to do it. And then I think everybody from then on would be able to pay me back, I think, part of that expense to get it over there. And.
And along those lines, I don't think I'm, I'm revealing any state secrets, but that line kind of cuts across the runway now. The city's gonna route it around to the south on Rawhide Trail, and that will make certain lots closer to, to city water and sewer than they were previously. But that's what I was referring to earlier.
And if I, I could, please, I just want to, this last person was Jeff Klein commenting. Sorry about that, Jeff.
Yes.
All right. I, I'd like to make a statement for the public record on this too. My name's Rafferty McDonald. We have, me and my wife, we have the lots at twenty-seven oh two and twenty-seven oh four, Ramrod.
If you could, would you please give your address, please?
Yes, the twenty-seven oh two and twenty-seven oh, or twenty-seven oh four and twenty-seven oh two Ramrod Trail. And they back right up to the, the Canyonlands Preserve there. And, you know, it's just a really beautiful area, and we bought it with residential intent, and I would kind of like to see that continue to happen, and so the C4 is a little bit concerning. But, you know, I, I think a residential style of zoning for those lots over there off Ramrod close to the Canyonlands Preserve is, is ideal.
Thank you. All right, any, anyone else to comment during the public hearing?
I would. John McKinnney.
Yes, John, if you would give your address.
Yeah, I, I'm a longtime Lago Vista resident. I live over by Highland Lakes.
And your, your address, John.
I have two lots on Rolling Hills Trail, ninety-four oh nine and ninety-four oh seven, Rolling Hills Trail. And I understand the, the changes that everybody's wanting to do, and I'm the guy that mows his lawn every three days. I like everything perfect, but I also bought lots in a light industrial area. Unbeknownst to me, it was a fluke apparently that it got zoned to that. But I've bought two lots there, and I currently store two very nice RVs on my lots, I adjacent to Darren Ginther. We've had multiple ideas. My end game is to do what you guys are wanting to do, which is have a barn dominium and, you know, have a diesel pusher up there and use it as a nice area. But that being said, I take issue with the fact that it keeps being thrown out, that that area is being used for something it wasn't intended to. When you look at the zoning for light industrial, it lists open lot storage, it lists Dennis' office, it goes all the way down the line. With all that being said, I have issue that you can just single out one thing and say, hey, we don't like this. And it sounds like this became light industrial from things not having been put in order. And right now, everything I'm hearing is people on the PNC board, and I don't mean this to be offensive in any way, but it sounds like people aren't even clear what C4 is. And it seems like this has been setting this way for a while. Does it hurt for a little more research to be done before we make a recommendation to City Council to change things? I'm all for going to a C4, but I also feel like we're getting the cart before the horse, where people are gonna make a recommendation and they don't even understand fully what they're recommending. If that makes sense, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and taking all this in consideration, but it just seems like it's a little bit cart for the horse to me.
Thank you, John. Any, I'm gonna just check, see if there's any further comments from the public before.
Yes, I've got one more. Yes, when, if you do end up changing the zoning to C4, this, this Jeff Klein.
Mr. Klein, just because it's the type of meeting we're in, please identify your name once again.
Okay, this is Jeff Klein.
Thank you.
And, and the, if it was, if the, if it was rezoned to C4 in the purple area and RRA in the, in the green and yellow, would the zoning, also with the, with the site, with the setbacks also convey, and the impervious cover also convey as it's written now?
They actually, in the C4, the, the setbacks and the impervious cover are a little more lenient than they are in the LI, as are the, as are the building material requirements.
Right, I just wasn't sure if they're gonna be with some kind of an exception on there since it doesn't have, you can't, you were supposedly, weren't supposed to be able to build a hangar unless you had access to the, to the runway. So you're gonna have to be some kind of an exception there, isn't there? Built into it.
Our intent to make that. The intent was to make that change. It says you, you cannot.
Okay.
Build a hangar unless you have. The intent was to make that change. It says you cannot build a hangar unless you have access.
Right. Okay. But everything else would stay the same? Because I like the fact that you, because those lots are so small, you need more lenient setbacks to actually do anything worthwhile there?
The C4 does have very lenient setbacks. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. I think we're coming down to one last time. Is there anyone else wanting to make any further comments before I close the public hearing? Going once, twice? All right, we have closed the public hearing at 8:51. Now, if we could move along with discussions amongst the commission members? Go ahead, Tom.
I'm inclined to favor C4 for the purple area and RRA for the area east of that current LI zone. I think C4 gives a flexibility, correctivities, and more presentable area. Those that, as Roy said, those that already may have properties for storing RVs or whatever, they would not be forced off of that just because of the zoning change. And I think RRA, just having a residential designation for that area east in the green, given the nature of those lots there, would seem to be more appropriate there with, I guess Roy mentioned something about a stipulation that you can't build a hangar if you don't have access to the runway, which seems self-evident, but nonetheless. So I think, you know, I guess that's where I'm at.
Tom, just for clarification, so is that based on what the initial in this item number four we're dealing with? Is that the recommendation that is suggested, you know, us, our consideration for this recommendation as it's written in item four? Or is it more applicable to some of the alternative recommendations of A through E? Maybe Roy could clarify.
I think he mimicked recommendation A, if I'm not mistaken.
The potential A versus what's actually written in item number four?
Right. Well, item number four is kind of, gives you a lot of options. It was written to accommodate anything you might propose without having to re-advertise. It was, advertise as broad as possible.
Yeah, and just...
A is what I would be looking at.
Right. And I just think for everyone's benefit, and I'm sure there's a number of individuals that are still listening, just to be clear that it's to recommend the approval of all the subject property contained in the light industrial district to be changed to the C4 district and all subject property currently in the R1B district to be changed to RRA district, subject to the ordinance amendment prohibiting hangars except when access to a taxiway or taxiway easement has been planted. So I just wanted to read that back. And is that fairly well clarified what you were suggesting, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Don?
Thank you. I'd just like to confirm that in the RRA designation, that that would cover just regular, single-family residence housing without it being a barn dominium or a hangar or anything along that line? I'm thinking about the gentleman who just said that he had 20702 and 20704. Can he build his house there?
Yes. I mean, it doesn't have to have a hangar in it. In fact, without taxiway access, it couldn't have a hangar. And the only business he could put in the RRA would be one that qualified as a home-based business. It could go in any residential district.
So in other words, you could have a single-family residence there without a problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, with that change, that text change we mentioned.
But if I'm not mistaken, the RRA designation also allows quite a bit higher ridge line, does it not?
Yes, sir, it does.
So in other words, you could have a three-story, single-family residence there?
I don't know if you could get three, but you could scare it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Just as long as you're going to have a single-family residence, that satisfies my question. Thank you.
All right. Other discussion amongst the commissioners? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. In looking at the documents and the plats, it's not easy for me to understand the competing interests of the people who have spoken here tonight. And it's, I don't know how we can get more information about those interests. But I certainly do appreciate the time and willingness of the people who have spoken to come to the meeting tonight and help us understand this. But I have to say that I, when I originally read this, I thought it was an endorsement of the Airport Advisory Committee wishes. And, but hearing from these many people, I'm not sure that I am prepared to say that I know what's best for all these people. As a matter of fact, I'm positive I don't know what's best for all these people. And I know that some people have bought that property up there while it was light industrial. And I was on the commission when that light industrial district was created. And at that time, I thought that what we were doing was what the people up there wanted. And for us to, to some extent, pull the rug out from under that is, I don't want to create that same mistake again. I do not want to, again, create a zoning problem for some of the property owners up there, some of the prospective property owners up there. And I know that I am not prepared to make a decision on this. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion amongst the commission members? All right. Well, if that's the case, I'll go ahead and make a motion that item number 21-1859-R-REZ, that the Planning, Zoning Commission of Lago Vista recommend approval of all the subject property currently in the L1 district to be changed to the C4 district and all subject property currently in the R1B district to be changed to the RRA district, subject to the ordinance amendment prohibiting hangars except when access to a taxiway or taxiway easement has been plotted. Ms. Silvera, I just wanted to have you. Thank you very much. That helps. Is there a second to that recommendation? That's seconded by Tom Monahan. And so is there further discussion before we move forward with the final vote? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. In the description of the item, it mentions that some of the R1B could be C4 instead of RRA, but your motion did not address that. Did you intentionally want to do that?
What I did was I went very specifically, and if you'd like, I'll read the recommendation again for clarification.
I can read the recommendation, Mr. Chairman. But your motion did not have the and/or option in it that some of the R1B could be C4 and/or RRA. You immediately made the, your motion made the jump that if it is currently R1B, it would become RRA.
Mr. Chair?
As I've heard that.
Yeah. I mean, the reason for that advertisement reading that way is so it gave you the latitude to consider all five of those alternatives and all those combinations. Had we not advertised it that broadly, and you chose one of those other ones, we would potentially have to re-advertise for you to be able to make that recommendation.
Okay, I understand that.
Right. The reason the application reads that way is not because we intended you to have optional zoning, if you will.
One from column A and two from column B?
Well, the idea was your recommendation would be specific. We just didn't know what it would be.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, mine is specific? Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Tom? No? Okay. So Mr. Brown, your vote?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
You abstain?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. He has to state the reason why he's abstaining.
Thank you, Ms. Silvera.
I think he did earlier in his statement, but...
Yeah, I did not understand the various competing interests of the various property owners up there. And I would have liked to have understood that better before the item came before us tonight. And I I feel as though I'm not prepared to make that decision at this time.
Is that sufficient, Ms. Davis?
Are you asking Erin?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just needs to be noted for the record.
All right. Moving forward with the vote, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. John Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
And Mr. Solomon?
Aye.
And Tom, since you seconded, I assume that's an aye?
Correct.
And the chair votes aye. That is, the motion carries with six and one abstention. All right. I've been notified that the commission wants to take a short recess for seven and a half minutes. And we will reconvene at 9:13 PM. Well, welcome back all. It's now 9:13 and we are back again with the Planning Zoning Commission of Lago Vista. And we'll move on to, let me just verify, give me a thumbs up, Tom, if you can hear me. Thanks. Item number five. Consideration of a recommendation regarding a potential amendment to Section 22 of Chapter 14 of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to improve and eliminate conflicts or ambiguities in the existing fence regulations. So not to fence this in, Roy, if you would give us a staff report?
Yes, sir. And you, and don't be shy about saying you don't think this is shovel-ready. Mr. Brown already pointed out something that was unintentional on my part. Even though it was an element in many of the ordinances in the surrounding areas, but basically, we had like a laundry list of things that were problematic that we knew from participation with the Board of Adjustments. In general, the ordinance was kind of complicated, which led to some both ambiguities and some, quite frankly, some inconsistencies. There were different sections of the ordinance that said different things. And it created problems with the Board of Adjustment. And then you had a list of changes that people had wanted for a long time. Controversy over the lack of definitions about heights and when they would or would not be allowed. Quite frankly, Mr. Monahan did what, what I appreciate the most. He did a lot of research and, and, you know, by doing the work that he did, he gave me a clue as to what the community would, would be willing to embrace. And that, that is a tremendous advantage. It keeps me from wasting too much time going down the wrong, you know, path, so to speak. For what it's worth, Mr. Brown pointed out that there was no height limit on, on what's called open fences. And even though there, there are a lot of neighboring jurisdictions that don't have a limit, that was not my intent. I know the fix for that, but it was not intentional. It was just simply an oversight.
And, go ahead, Roy.
Well, I don't know if you want me to list the, the major changes or exactly how you want me to approach this, but like I said, one of the problems we had is that, you know, the ordinance seemed to be more detailed than it needed to be. And which led to the, you know, the, the problem with compliance and those kinds of things. You know, quite frankly, the, the staff had trouble getting through the, the fence ordinance and understanding what it said. Once again, we tried to make it as simple as possible. We, we only used distinctions that made a difference. And everything else was kept as simple and as straightforward as we can. The, the major changes were, you know, clarification, getting rid of ambiguities and to create a path to where eight-foot fences could be allowed under certain circumstances. Those are the major changes. There's some minor ones, too. You can't have a spiked fence that's made out of metal. Somebody was saying that too many deer get impaled that way. So we kind of, little things like that are in there. Aren't real huge, but, but we did clean all that kind of stuff up.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I might add. Part of my work in taking a first-pass look at the ordinance was one, reorganizing it. So that the flow of the ordinance would kind of be, you know, if you're a prospective proper owner wants to put in a fence. You know, that it kind of has some flow to it as to what you can and can't do. So we stated right at the outset, basically at the very beginning, that you got to have a permit. Which was hard, which was hard to find in the current ordinance. You got to drill down to even find it. So we made that explicit at the beginning. I had used for the things that I had suggested, like if you recall the fence ordinance, if you go look at it currently. You'll see there's a lot of graphics of different types of fences. You know, I didn't think it was necessary, so I moved it to the very end of the ordinance in my rating, and then Roy kind of cleaned it up and got rid of them. Which I agree with. I don't think need that kind of detail. I also don't think it's ready to vote on yet because, you know, we just got this out, I think, today for us to look at. So I would, my suggestion is that everyone kind of compares the new clean version, proposed clean version with the current version. And kind of spend some time just going there, see if there's any things omitted. One thing I thought of, a couple of things I thought of that, that I caught that, too, is there's no height for the, like wrought iron fences. There's no height limit. But I was also wondering if, given these changes where you can have a higher fence, if you have, one of the important changes is there seems to be more people who want eight-foot fences. And so we are in this new proposal. Eight-foot fence is okay if you get the adjacent property owners written permission to put it in. Rather than just giving automatic approval to it. And that's consistent with some other, I looked at Austin's Cedar Park in Georgetown. And I can't remember which town had it or which ones, but, you know, they had provisions where, I saw provisions where if you had written approval from your, basically from your neighbors, then it was okay to go tall, go higher. But I think this should be talked about now, but defer it for an actual vote to the next meeting, so that everybody has a little more time to go over it and, and if you have any edit suggestions. You know, send them to Roy, so we'll get a chance to look at them maybe ahead of the next meeting.
Thank you, Tom. What is the price for a permit?
It's $75.
Okay, thank you. Is, you know, forgive me, but is, is there a place where all the different fees are listed?
Yes, sir. It's Appendix A of the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Roy.
It's, it's called Appendix A of the ordinance. It's at the very end of the, it's a, it's a fee schedule and includes, it's in various articles. And the building fees are in one subdivision, fees are in another. Copping fees, utility fees, it's got everything in there.
Yeah, I knew, I knew it was in there somewhere and I, I was pecking around and was not able to find it. And I can see why you never put the price in something that's going to be permanent. So you know, you, you can go change the fee in the fee schedule and not print it in the actual zoning.
Well, and there, there's, there are other requirements about when you change a fee, about how you advertise it and stuff like that. So even when you want us to change a fee, like remember the landscape ordinance? We had to do it separately. It's just easier that way.
Gotcha. And in regards to the, the deer and spiked fences. Doesn't make a lot of difference if you have just a standard wrought iron fence like I have, my neighbor has. Probably over the past 20 years, we've shot three deer that were impaled and suffering hanging over the fence. So that's.
I wasn't impressed by that reason either, but I also didn't think it hurt anything either.
Well, the only thing it hurts is the deer and they're, it's, it's pretty pitiful sight to have to do that, but you just call animal control, which is our police officers and they're, they have a nice 40 caliber Smith &amp; Wesson to take care of that. So. So. Any, anyone else have questions for the staff? I, I, I agree with Tom. It's a lot to digest and you put them side by side. So probably, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, just, I guess question for Roy, Aaron. Since we're trying to allow for additional heights in this ordinance, should, should you think we should add a line in there that, you know, you cannot request a variance on this provision? I mean, it gets some of that effect? So would take this away from what Board of Adjustments deals with?
Well, it, I think that the issue is, is if they, nobody applies for that variance because they want to, I can assure you. It's, it's, I think, I think they'll just be informed by us and with our fence packet that we put online that they can make these requests and not have to get a variance.
Right, okay.
Nobody applies for variance without talking to us. That doesn't happen.
You know, but it's always a case of begging forgiveness rather than permission, so.
Oh, yeah. I, I think you're right that, that we need to do whatever we can to make people aware of these things when we change them.
Yeah.
You know. That, that's, that is in fact important. And we've talked about doing that. It's just, you know, we don't have the industry groups like you do in a large city that we can get that information out effectively. It's a little harder here.
Mr. Monahan? Am I understanding that if, your thought is that if we change the maximum height for a fence to eight feet, that that provision would not be subject to a variance, meaning somebody couldn't put in a nine-foot or 10-foot or 11-foot fence? Is that your thought, thought process? As you set a new high, new maximum and that, that wouldn't be, a variance would not be an option?
Well. That would seem to be implied by having provisions to allow for more height. But, but it would also include they couldn't, I guess, you know, there's no need to ask for anything higher, so maybe not allow it. And then two, if.
Yeah.
They get a permit for a six-foot fence. And then they go ahead and build an eight-foot fence, then they want to come back for a variance. So they don't have to tear it down and start over. So it's kind of stopping. That's, that's kind of where I was getting at with begging forgiveness rather than permission. They, they permit one thing and build another, then they want to come in and try to get a variance, which they shouldn't be given granted anyway. But it, it takes up time if they apply for variance. Everybody's time.
Right. For a variance to be granted, there are specific criteria. One of the criteria in state, state case law has to do with the fact that you cannot create the circumstance that creates the necessity for the variance, meaning you can't create the problem. And if you build the fence to a height that would otherwise require a variance, you, you can't create your own problem. The other part to that is, you know, you would have to establish a hardship. So some of that is self-fixing, meaning, you know, if you, if you, the ask for forgiveness rather than permission issue. One of the basis for denial of a variance for a height would be that you created that circumstance.
Any other commission members have questions for the staff? Yes, Richard?
Thank you. Tom, there's something that I found that I didn't understand that it's in 22.15 that says fencing components requiring a foundation concealed below grade have you have to get the, if it's in an easement, you have to get the easement vacated. Won't that create just an awful lot of work on the part of, a lot of parties, don't, don't, most people have an easement on one side or the other of their property? And if they want to just set wood fence posts or other fence posts in concrete. It seems like that's a, a really difficult issue to resolve to get all of those easements vacated.
Yes, if you would, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of that is it's referring to masonry walls that are on, that they're on a, a spread footing in the.
Or a continuous footing, not just posts.
And I took that language from somebody else's ordinance. And it, you're right, it probably needs more clarification that it's, it's not talking about postal piles.
Okay, it just said requiring a foundation concealed below grade. And so I thought that that.
No, you're right. I mean, there's better language. You, you, you raise a very valid objection.
I have one other question, if you don't mind. And, and that has to do. And, and that has to do with the shrubs and bushes. First of all, I did not expect to find that to be treated in a fence ordinance. I, I saw some diagrams where they were mixed with sections of fence and sections of shrub. And so I, I then learned where that came from. But if all you have is shrubs. Not, no, no hardscape in there. If, if it's just landscaping, should that become a part of the ordinance?
The, the only part we really address is, is the part that would impede the, the, this, you know, vision triangle, so to speak. We prohibit that regardless of whether it includes landscaping. But, you know, other than that, I, I don't recall that being anything that, that was addressed in most other ordinances. So we weren't sure why it would necessarily need to be in ours.
Well, it, it was in twenty-two dash twenty, at point twenty.
Well, those are the exemptions.
Under I and J.
Those are the exemptions though.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-two twenty is, are the exemptions.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, one, one of the things that it exempted was shrubs and bushes within three feet of a building? Why is that in there? I mean, I don't think anyone missed, would mistake shrubs and bushes within three feet of a building as an attempt to create a fence.
Right. Those are, those are elements that were in the existing ordinance that, you know, we didn't quite frankly scrutinize as careful as we should. But that's, that's a holdover we didn't strike out.
Well, I'm, okay, I, I and J both look to me like they need to be looked at. Thank you.
Don?
Yes, I, I thank you. I just wonder if there should be some sort of language in here. Saying that whatever has been approved in previous iterations would be grandfathered in, or is that understood?
It, it, and it's kind of covered, actually. It tells you when you lose your non-conforming status. Unless you do one of those things, you retain it.
Okay. As long as it's covered.
Yes, sir. The only thing we amended in there, it used to talk about the value of the repairs and replacement only. We changed that to include the value, which is kind of hard to ascertain. And then also added a requirement that it have to do with a certain percentage of the material being replaced or repaired. So that, that's a little more objective, if you will. You know, we, we, if, if the, if the person, you know, wanting to repair the fence without a permit. You know, you'd be surprised how cheap that fence was.
Yeah. The, the, what brought up my question is, there's a particular statement here. And structural integrity, where it says fences constructed of chain link, frame welded wire picket or. Other similar materials shall require a minimum of two horizontal support rails with a minimum vertical spacing. At one half the fence height. Now, there are fences that have been approved that exist that don't have two horizontal rails. And that was, that was the cause of my, I asked, my asking about grandfathering.
Until, until it surpasses that limit of repair, those are good.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Mr. John Dro raised a question in my mind about grandfathering. Do you get to grandfather your project even if you built it without a permit?
Would be a big negatory.
Oh, good.
That's called a violation.
Okay, okay.
No, I pre- I prefaced it with if they were approved. Earlier iteration.
The word non-conforming refers to changes in the ordinance where your fence was once upon a time legal and no longer is. It, it gets, it gets stretched way beyond that often.
When it gets stretched beyond that, Roy, is that a great, great grandfathering or?
Now, that's what, that's when we stick Aaron on them, actually. That's Aaron and Crystal.
Okay. Scary thing, the great, great grandfathering. Okay, anyone else with questions for the staff at this point? All right then, we're going to move to. Something, something died here. It's nine thirty-six and we're going to open the public hearing. And at this point, we'll see if there's anyone that would like to. Spend a three to five minutes. With any kind of public comment, questions? Doesn't appear to be. So it's nine thirty-seven and we're going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? I guess my, my only comment would be, you know, Tom. Thank you very much. And I know, Richard, you've spent a considerable amount of time going over this. And I would certainly go along with what Tom's saying. Let's go ahead and not make a recommendation tonight, but maybe the recommendation would be to bring this back. Tom, what would you say maybe in our July meeting or maybe push it off till August? What, what would your suggestion be?
I think probably the July meeting and I guess it would be a continuance, right, of this? Yes, sir. Yeah, and, and the, the mistakes are, there, there are plenty of them, but they're not, none of them are that serious or hard to fix.
So, so that being said, we could probably be looking at our meeting in July. To bring this back again.
Yeah.
So. Aaron, what's the best thing to do? Just a recommendation to continue our, the item number five at that time?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. That's the case, and make a motion to. Bring this item back to our July meeting. For further consideration. Is there a second?
Larry, Larry.
Seconded by Larry. And any further discussion? No further discussion on item number five to. Continue and defer to our July meeting. Richard? Richard?
I'm sorry, you were asking for my vote. I'm.
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to abstain or?
No, I voted aye.
Okay, and, and your vote is?
Aye.
And Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. John Dro?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
And Mr. Solomon?
I think you waved his hand.
Did he? Okay, that must be an aye. And Mr. Monahan? And Mr. Zaleski are both aye. It's unanimous that we continue this. And to our July meeting. Okay. We'll move along to item number six. The consideration of a recommendation regarding a potential amendment to section. One-one-point-two-zero of chapter fourteen, a Lago Vista Code of Ordinances. To align local requirements more closely with the Texas Local Government Code requirements for approval. Of a zoning variance. So, Roy, if you'd like to do the staff presentation?
Yes, sir, and this again is, is a problem that, you know, involves the Board of Adjustment. In the past, at some point, Lago Vista decided to create their own criteria for granting a variance. And for whatever reason, they varied so far off the. Much smaller or in more finite requirements of, of the state statute. And, and the result is, is that they have very little guidance. Upon which to base their decisions. And as a result, they tend to get a little random. And we can't really help them by saying, well, here's what the court decided under a similar set of facts. Because our ordinance is so different, the, the court decisions don't align with that. So anyway, we started with the presumption, what you have in front of you is verbatim. I sent that to Mr. Monahan. He made the very valid complaint that is probably, you know, what might have led to, to where they ended up previously. Is that these are a little vague and imprecise. That is absolutely true, and there's nothing wrong with, with trying to remove that ambiguity. The challenge and, and the, the difficult part of that is, is to not again add requirements or change the core requirements. So you have to be very careful. If you want to try and embellish that language. It's going to take some work and, and a lot of scrutiny. So if you guys want to go there, again, we would, you know, recommend that, you know, you defer this for future consideration. But we didn't want to get this item on the table. It's been sitting out there for a very long time. And it, 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 it doesn't need to keep sitting out there being unattended, if you will.
Thanks, Roy. Aaron, do you want to make any further comment along those lines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with what Roy has said. That the conditions and the reasons for making these changes. The existing requirements, one, make it virtually impossible. If the Board of Adjustment were to apply the requirements as they're written today. No one, it would be almost impossible to meet all of those requirements. Because that's how you are required to, that's how the Board of Adjustment is required to look at it. You have to meet all of these requirements before you would be qualified to get a variance. And that's nearly impossible. If you do want to add some additional. Conditions or requirements to this, the things that I would recommend that we, that you add. Would be related to the specific Texas case law that addresses this issue. I mentioned earlier that the, the variance or the conditions. Required or necessitating the, the variance cannot be self-imposed. You cannot create the need for the variance. The, another requirement that comes out of case law is that the variance has to be tied directly to the land. To a condition on the property. There are about four, four different factors that have come out of case law. If you wanted though to consider those, I'd be happy to provide some additional information through Roy. For your next, for the next time, so that you can see those. Those would be the only thing that I think would be appropriate to add if you wanted to add some, something a little more concrete. To this set of conditions. It's, it, there are. A few dozen cases that Texas courts have heard regarding variances. A lot of times it has to do with. Decisions that were made by Boards of Adjustment. Where they denied the variance and, and then the city was sued. Because the Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial entity, body. And therefore, if the applicants are unhappy with the result. Then they, they take that matter directly to court, to district court. So it is important to have a set of requirements that are clear. That are easy for your Board of Adjustment members to apply. So that they can make strict findings, clear findings. Because that is one of the requirements for variances is that they have to make findings on the record. And that way, it makes it less likely that someone will prevail. Should they choose to sue the city if they're unhappy with the result of that. With the existing requirements we have. Any person aggrieved by a decision of the Board of Adjustment can appeal to court. Meaning if, 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 if the Board of Adjustment grants a variance. And someone who might be affected by that, that granting of the variance. A neighboring property for say, for example, was unhappy and thought that the variance should not be granted. They can sue. So it is important to, to have that clear set of requirements. That is aligned with Texas jurisprudence. To provide the best opportunity for your board to make clear decisions. And lessen the potential for litigation. So that, that's kind of my recommendation on that, since it's, this is the most. Critical thing that the Board of Adjustment will do. They have some other duties, but these things would be the thing that would likely result in litigation for the city.
Thank you, Aaron. Just, just for clarification, so this item this evening is. If we were to recommend as it's written to the city council, that means we would move forward with constructing. Those things for the Board of Adjustment that would be more closely tied to the Texas Local Government Code. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, my, you know, in principle, I agree, just keeping it simple and adopting the statutory language, which is what Roy did here. But I was, the, the things that struck me is. Is there's some terms in there that we don't have a definition for, so that would open for some ambiguity, I think. And I guess more for Aaron, but is there somewhere like a definition of what the public interest is? I couldn't find an actual definition in the, in statutes. And then the other definition would be, you know, what's a hardship? And no other than that. I'm just trying to put, put something around there as to what these terms mean. So that they give more clarity to the board rather than just having those three lines. I mean, I'm not, not, my mind didn't take a major change, just. Get, get wrapped, get our arms wrapped around what some of the definite, definitional issues are.
Your Texas jurisprudence really digs into what is considered an unnecessary hardship. That's where those factors come in that help, that say, you know, it can't be self-created. It can't be purely financial, so it can't be about money only, that it has to be related to the land. So we do have some guidance from Texas Jurisprudence to give us something, give us some information that tells us what a hardship is and what it's not. There is less information to help define what is. There is less information to help define what is contrary to the public interest. And so I can look at the existing case law to see if we can find something to help craft that definition. So I do think that that is really important. The vast majority of the discussion about variances has to do with what constitutes a hardship. And so it would be important to add that information or provide that clarification.
I've got one from other ordinances somewhere. I'll have to go find it, but I do have one.
So, so I guess my question, once again, going back, if we were to actually recommend this to the City Council, would we have to add some conditions to that as far as giving those examples like you were bringing out to tie it to specifics in Texas case law? Would we have to do that in our recommendation to the City Council?
You don't necessarily have to. They have the, the authority to make those additional adjustments, should they so choose. But it is always good, and I always regularly recommend that you take a complete recommendation to them, and I do think leaving out or leaving undefined these, these key terms would be something that they're going to be asking about anyway. So it may be worth your time for, to give us one shot at kind of providing you a little more information about those so you can decide whether you want to recommend it or you want to leave it to council to come up with their, their thoughts.
And that's kind of what we need. We need you guys to give us some guidance on what you want.
Well, I kind of liked what Erin was referring to. Some of those specific things about, you know, it can't be just about money. It has to be tied to the land and so on. So it sounds to me like, once again, this is something we need to take another shot at. We can open the public hearing. We can, you know, get whatever input if anyone's there, but go ahead and defer this until I'd have to ask for your guidance. You know, could it be done soon enough for the next meeting in July?
I think it could be. I've given a couple of trainings to our Board of Adjustment on what is considered a hardship or an unnecessary hardship. So it wouldn't be difficult to add that information in for your July meeting if you want to hear it that quickly. Yes, sir.
All right, we'll just go ahead and continue the discussion and see what other commissioners want to either add to that or.
And some public interest, what's a public interest? I'll bring you a definition of that that we could add to the definition section.
Okay.
We'll bring both those definitions back.
I just be helpful with your context.
Any, anyone else have comments at this time? Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. Don, didn't you recently or still serve on the Board of Adjustment? No, I'm sorry, misunderstood then. Okay.
Sorry, I'm economic development.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone who's tuned in here tonight who has served on the Board of Adjustment?
Well, we haven't.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could get some specific feedback, additional, additional information from, from them.
Typically, Mr. Monahan serves that function. I don't know if he has already, but.
I'm waiting on feedback.
Okay. He agreed to take what, what the recommendations were to Mr. Kason for feedback. So it's not a secret, but that, that was the plan.
Ask him on the fourth tee tomorrow.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think based on what our city attorney has mentioned, that she has already given some guidance to the Board of Adjustment, that it probably has a pretty good idea of what they either shared with her or what she has shared with them, which should suffice for our review at our next commission meeting. So let's, unless there's other comments right now, let's go ahead and open this public hearing at nine fifty-six and see if there are any public comments regarding this particular item, number six, on our Texas Local Government Code. Well, I don't see anybody jumping right in there, so if that's the case, we'll just go ahead and close the public hearing at nine fifty-seven. And is there any further discussion before we move to a recommendation? There's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend this item to be continued onto, to our next regular meeting in July, in July.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Don Jandro. Any further discussion? Mr. Brown, your vote?
I vote aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Jandro?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
Mr. Solomon?
Aye.
And Tom Monahan?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion to defer and review further at the July meeting is unanimous. And now we can move to the highlight of our evening and ask for comments from our council liaison, David Williams.
Good evening, how are you? It's getting late, so I don't want to make a whole lot of comments. I'm a little concerned that people are not completing their applications to the developmental services and not showing up to defend their cases. So at some point in time, council's gonna have to look at that and see if we can help that situation out a little bit. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say.
All right.
Okay, we made a future agenda item to discuss a possible requirement that they attend?
Yeah, I, I think it's something I might have to get clarification from Erin on and see what we can legally do and what we legally can't do to make that happen, so.
We can have that discussion, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Your meetings are getting like our meetings. Your meetings are getting.
Well, we take, we take a little, when we just kind of, you know, take our picture off there and mute our mic, we, you know, get a chance to doze off for a few minutes. So it is a lot like some of your meetings have been, so.
Okay.
The next item is discussion and recommendations concerning a 2021 update of the 2009 transportation or thoroughfare plan and the update. So I guess we do have our hard copy, but if who's going to kind of lead us through that thoroughfare plan update?
Mr. Payne is here representing Freezing Nichols. They're a consultant. He is the presenter.
All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Roy. Can y'all hear me okay and see the screen? Should be showing the title screen for the thoroughfare plan update?
Oh, certainly can.
Excellent, okay, very good. So when last we met in March, this is the similar, almost the exact same presentation as presented in March. The two items that have changed regarding the thoroughfare plan update are in the map. We've had consultation from TechDOT and the Travis County TNR Department on two roadways. So the recommendation for FM fourteen thirty-one east of Loman Ford Road, the right-of-way recommendation, they are requesting two hundred feet be reserved through the thoroughfare plan rather than the hundred and fifty that we presented in March. That's due to rolling terrain, and it turns out that that's actually consistent with the 2009 plan. So there you have it. That is one change since the March presentation. The second is Travis County is requesting one hundred and fourteen feet of right-of-way preservation south of Boggy Ford Road. So those are the two changes, but I will go back through the presentation from March briefly, just to kind of hit the high notes, if that sounds good. And then we'll open it up for questions and hopefully a recommendation. So as you may recall, the thoroughfare plan, the basics, the thoroughfare plan one oh one, if you will, is essentially, this is an adopted policy document by, by the city to, the chief purposes are to preserve network connectivity and to preserve right-of-way from development so that when roadway improvements are made, they have sufficient right-of-way to do those improvements. But we're bringing this item to, to the City of Lago Vista now, or the staff is bringing that for an update, specifically to inform the impact fee program, which you'll hear a little bit more about the next phases of that after this presentation and after this action. So the, the super, the super summary is that, you know, there are, what is changing? There are a couple of items. We're recommending a change to FM fourteen thirty-one to acknowledge its principal arterial classification with a right-of-way of between one hundred and fifty and two hundred feet right-of-way preservation. Loman Ford Road, north of Boggy Ford Road, has no change. Minor collectors, the, the minor collectors, we are adding a two-way left turn lane to the typical design section. Adding a two-way left turn lane for that provides additional safety, reduced oncoming crashes rates, crash rates. And that also increases the competitiveness for, for roadway projects from the City of Lago Vista for, for regional funding applications. And lastly, adding five feet per side to the right-of-way to allow for drainage, to adding that to the right-of-way where currently it would be more of an easement, that's to accommodate natural, the natural sloping area. We've also got the special considerations noted there, that the main difference is adding ferry considerations for the crossings to the prior thoroughfare plan. Those would be explored further by the Travis County. Currently has a feasibility study that they are trying to get funded in the budget, the annual budget process. So we did have a little bit of discussion with them on that, but so far, there's nothing currently in the budget, but they would be the ones to lead that discussion when it comes up. So here's the reference to Loman Ford Road, a major arterial divided four-lane section. So this is from the county blueprint, Travis County blueprint. And again, the summary of what's changing and where, the, the map, the draft map that y'all have has the highlighted sections of where and what is changing. Go through that again. And lastly, the why, why are we making these recommended changes? That's to, to result in roadway cross-sections that are safer for some of the higher-speed roadways, to provide divided roadway cross-sections and separate non-auto design uses from the auto, auto lanes to inform the costs for the, for cost recovery and the impact fee, which you'll hear about next. And also to be a little bit more competitive and participatory in the, the county and regional transportation conversations. So with that, I would, with that short summary, if there are any other additions by, by Roy, or I don't think Eric's on the, the call tonight, but we worked with, with both, both gentlemen, thank you for your, thank you for your assistance and guidance on this one. And if there are other questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Payne, when you say that you're going to add five feet for drainage to each side of those selected arterials, is that going to add ten feet to the right-of-way? Or does the extra five feet, just, is that just a designation within the right-of-way and doesn't actually change the total right-of-way?
The total right-of-way that would be preserved and that is shown, represented in the draft map that's on the screen, that does effectively add ten feet to the, the overall right-of-way preservation. But it actually changes a little bit. Some of the right-of-ways were a little bit narrower because of going to a different cross-section. So it's a, it is a noticeable change.
Thank you.
Other questions? Probably unrelated to this. And maybe someone does have the, the answer as to why the construction stopped on Loman Ford Road. I've had a number of people call. I think, Roy, you pretty well clarified that for some reason, but they will resume construction starting Sunday through Wednesday of this coming week.
Yeah, and Eric is here, I think. He may know more about the why. I have a guess, but it's just a guess.
Yeah, I saw him earlier.
Now, I'm in Cognito, this, just for you guys.
Thanks, Erin.
Yeah, absolutely. So what happened is for our contractual obligations, the contractor was required to start work within fourteen days of our issuance of notice to proceed. And if you guys recall, during that whole time, it was raining. So the contractor basically wasn't working and he wasn't finishing up his other jobs, but he was obligated to start work, so which is what he did. He started work based on what we required him to do. But then he said, okay, well, Eric, I have time to finish, we have time to finish up the job. And they promised that they would finish it up before Fourth of July, but they needed to take care of some of the other projects that they were contractually obligated to complete. So we allowed them to move forward to their jobs in San Antonio and Budo or somewhere else, forgot what they were. And they will return Sunday night and complete it within a few days. And soon after that, they will score the pavement to create traction. And by middle of July, we should have it all striped and cleaned up and complete.
Thank you, Erin. Other comments or questions about the thoroughfare plan? I guess a little guidance from, maybe from you, Roy, as far as, you know, it mentions recommendation.
Yes, sir. What we're looking for is for you to, you know, send a recommendation to council to adopt the new, the updated version of the thoroughfare plan. You know, that would be our preference. If you have any other comments that you want us to attach to that recommendation, I mean, those are certainly acceptable, but you know, that's generally what we're doing, what we're looking to do is take this on to council and let them adopt it, which will let us preserve those right-of-ways. You know, and I'll give you an example. We talked to a developer already that's talking about developing that property. And of course, you know, he was going to design it where if we ever widen the right-of-way that way, we were going to have to buy his improvements. This gives us the authority to say, no, we're going to preserve this right-of-way, you know, and keep your improvements out of there.
Understood. Thank you. So with that, I would make a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for the recommendation to the City Council of Lago Vista to update the 2009 transportation thoroughfare plan to the 2021 update. Does that sound acceptable? Is there a second? To the recommendation, seconded by Tom Monahan? And if we would, we'll just go through. Mr. Brown?
I vote aye.
Ms. Davis?
She just texted that her internet service has failed her.
Oh. Did she? I guess she didn't vote. That's okay. Mr. Jondro?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
Mr. Solomon?
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We'll just go ahead and record the vote with a six, a majority of six due to technical difficulties with Ms. Davis's internet connection. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And I think we've already covered enough future agenda items that'll probably keep us busy for oh, till some of us retire. And we will go ahead at this time. Are we meeting for real next time? Just curious, are we meeting in person next time?
I believe that's correct.
You can.
Is there a place we're going to meet?
City Council chambers.
Oh. Well, okay.
Until the time comes when we have recording capability in other places, you either have to virtually or in council chambers. And your opportunity to meet virtually may end if the governor does not extend the exception to the Open Meetings Act that allows you to do it virtually. So we'll see what he says for July.
All right. Well, we'll be waiting with bated breath to see which way we go, whether we're virtual or masked or unmasked or vaccinated, unvaccinated, show our IDs, whatever we need to do to continue this conglomeration. So without any further ado, we will adjourn this meeting at 10:15 PM. And we will now call the order and citizen comments for non-agenda items during the Impact Advisory Committee meeting. And of course, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the committee is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any item not on the agenda. And I don't, do we have anyone that is going to comment from the public? I don't see anybody just jumping right in wanting to make a comment. So let's go ahead and start with the presentation and discussion of our land use assumption, capital improvement plan methodology, and recommendations.
Thank you. Can someone make Eddie Haas the presenter?
Eddie, you're the man, I suppose.
I think so. Can, let's see, hang on a second here, hitting the screen button.
I just now made that change.
Thank you.
Okay, can you see it?
Yeah, we see like the whole, we don't see it in presentation mode.
Hang on a second here. There we go.
That looks.
Okay, very good. Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to visit with you all regarding land use assumptions and capital improvement plans for roads. Tonight, we have a few things to cover regarding how we see Lago Vista growing over the next 10 years. I will talk about that here in a second, and then how that informs the development of the impact fee CIP. This impact fee CIP is a little different from your typical or your general community CIP in that only projects identified on an impact fee CIP, the funds that are collected from an impact fee program can be used to fuel toward those projects only. Okay. This kind of refresher, your role as an advisory committee member is to provide comment on the land use assumptions, the capital improvements plan, and ultimately, the impact fee. We will, tonight, we're talking about the LUAC and the CIP. We're not getting into the impact fee costing. These two components, the land use assumptions and the CIP are kind of the building blocks. If you give us the green light, then we'll move forward in developing costs, our project costing, then we'll calculate the cost per service unit and do all the impact fee kinds of things. So we're here on the 24th for the LUAC IP, the targeted meeting for you all next to discuss impact fees and/or potentially collection rate is September 9. So if we keep schedule according to Hoyle, we'll see you all, and you all approve this, then we'll see on the 9th, on September 9th, to review the impact fee calculations.
And just as a reminder, because this is a new program for roadways, we're required to have two public hearings on the roadway side of things. So coming out of this meeting, we're looking for a recommendation on your roadway land use and CIP. We do not need a recommendation tonight on the water wastewater side. We're going to go ahead and review it, but because the water wastewater is an update, that does not have to go through a two-public hearing process. It only has to go to one public hearing.
Jessica's right. That was a change in state law back in 2001, that system updates only needed one public hearing to hear all the components, because roads are new, we're going to have to go through that two-step process. So if we get your approval tonight on the LUAC IP, we will be advancing forward with resolution information and public noticing, et cetera, for a public hearing with the City Council regarding land use assumptions and capital improvement plans for impact fees. This does not mean that we're adopting road impact fees. This is simply the building blocks for the potential imposition of a road impact fee. So here we are with the blue dots, LUAC IP, where we go forward from here is with the green light, then we do our technical calculations, prepare all the technical reporting for the impact fee, which sets us up for the second public hearing on the potential imposition of the fee itself. Once you go through that public hearing, there is the required adoption of the ordinance. It would be the new ordinance for the roads and an update for the water wastewater. The idea is we're going to capture it all in one shot when we get to the City Council. And I don't recall when it is later this year, but we'll do roads.
The first public hearing on September 2nd on just the roadway LUAC IP, and the second public hearing on everything is proposed for October 7.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on process, what we're doing here? We're going to kind of walk through that. Step one, the development of land use assumptions. You might recall from the previous meeting, I apologize, I wasn't there, but here I am. And so the land use assumptions helps to inform the capital improvements plans. It talks about how we see Lago Vista growing over the next 10-year planning period. By law, we have to do a land use assumption for 10 years. David looked at a 20-year horizon in the development of a thoroughfare plan. At that point, the assumption is, the presumption is that the city will be almost fully built out, where the roadway needs to accommodate access and circulation, et cetera, for the community. That's the thoroughfare plan. Land use assumptions by law, and all of this is codified under Chapter 395 Texas Department of Code, says we look at a 10-year window, and then a program by laws do a mandated update at least every five years. Okay. So when we look at growth over the 10 years, we're looking at two things, basically. We're looking at population and employment growth. And the reason for that, particularly as it relates to infrastructure, is there's different demands generated by non-residential type uses. And more specifically, we look at just kind of the basic categories of industrial, commercial, and office, kind of those broad categories in helping us define what are going to be some of the non-residential type growth anticipated for the 10-year window. We do look at the, or we develop the land use assumptions by service area. We're going to show you the service area structure here in a minute, but ultimately, the land use assumptions informs an individual calculation for each service area and infrastructure component. And then finally, again, it's the basis for the CIP. So the service areas, for your water and wastewater, it aligns with your current city limits. And roads, it aligns with the current city limits. However, state mandate says that roadway impact fee service areas can't be greater than six miles. So we've divided the Lago Vista into two service areas with the dividing line along Lakeshore, Lakeshore Drive, Shoreline Ranch, Boggy Ford, then kind of along National till we get to the golf course there. I don't know which hole it is, between Outpost Race and Lakefront Drive, then over into the lake. But we've divided the two service areas with these physical boundaries. Initially, we looked at somewhere here near kind of Bonanza and Extension, but because we got this donut hole in here and we didn't want to deal with, we wanted to deal with hard boundaries, we went ahead and moved it further to the south. We visited with staff on this, and I think you all were maybe informed on this at the last meeting, but felt comfortable with the division of the two service areas as defined. So we have a north or number one, service area one, and a southern service area two for the road component. Okay. So that means we're, the land use numbers, we're looking at both, we're breaking it up by the two services for the roads. And we have all that data by traffic analysis zones, but it made it easier for the compilation of the data by each one of the roadway zones. And I bring up traffic analysis zones, that's kind of a smaller geographic area for travel demand modeling. That's what the Capital Area MPO uses as part of the regional travel demand model. We use some of their data to help inform some of the number crunches that we went through to derive the 10-year growth figures. But more importantly, we looked at the TASZ structure and how we could align the two, particularly because it helps to make updates a lot quicker and more efficient. We did have to net out obviously some areas that are outside of city limits. The TASZs don't align perfectly with city limits, so we had to kind of take some assumptions to remove some areas, some demographics that were associated with some of the areas that are currently not within the city limits of Lago Vista. So impact fee law says for roads, you know, it can only be within, the roadway impact fee can only be within the city limits because roads, it's an open system of improvements. You've got traffic, i.e. on say, on 1431 that traverses the community, Loman Ford, that's just all background traffic that's there. Therefore, to ensure that new developments only paying for their fair share of costs on roads within Lago Vista, it's confined to the city limits. Okay? Okay, so that's kind of the service area structure. Jessica, I'll turn it over to you on the water and wastewater growth?
Yep. So on water wastewater, we talked about these growth rates last time. We assumed that we were going to have an 8% growth rate for the first two years and then have it level off to 5% for subsequent years. And we did this based on the number of water and wastewater connections in your system. And you'll see that these numbers are a little bit different because we do have some existing residents that are on septic tanks. So this is based on the existing number connections in January of 2021, and then just applying that growth rate to those connections to come up with our 10-year growth rate that we'll be using for our impact fee calculation.
Historically, Jessica, let's say within the last five years, how has Lago Vista been growing? It's probably been growing at greater than 8%. Yeah, yeah, exploding. And we, the reason I ask Jessica that for your benefit is that we had a discussion on this growth rate, and it's a lot higher than, our numbers are somewhat tailored. We're taking it into kind of a spike in growth, but then it's going to kind of level off. And we're thinking about the infrastructure needed to cover this anticipated growth. So we had a good discussion on that, but we felt very comfortable with the 8% for the two years and then leveling off to the 5% through 2031. And you will be revisiting this by year 2026, probably starting the process in '25, for the next mandated update.
And so what we did with that information, those growth projections, is we use this to develop water demand projections. So what we see on this graph here is your average day demand is shown in blue, so that's just your average water usage over your entire year. And on the left-hand side of the graph, you can see your historical data, and on the right-hand side of the graph, you can see projected data. And we use this to do these projections. We looked at your historical data and estimated that you have about 360 gallons per connection per day of average day water usage. And then it's also important to know what's happening on your maximum day. The day in the summer when your system is stressed, you're using a lot of water. So we also projected your maximum day demand shown in orange here, and we estimate that on your maximum day, you're using 1.85 times as much water, so almost two times as much water as you are on your average day. And that's important because when we're thinking about the sizing of pump stations and storage tanks, we want to make sure that we're planning for those maximum day demands. So that's the two different demand conditions that we're showing on this graph. We are also looking at wastewater flow. So this is your average annual daily flow. Again, we have the historical numbers on the left, projected numbers on the right, and we're estimating 130 gallons per connection per day based on historical flows. And this number is going to be important when we're looking at our wastewater infrastructure and particularly at our wastewater treatment plant expansions. We really need to understand what those average annual daily flows are so that our treatment plant expansions are sized and timed correctly.
So the roadway component, we would get, capture data from the previous impact fee program, Jessica's numbers on water connections, review of building permit data, to capture at least through 2019, and then with a 10% average growth through 2021, at least through the beginning of 2021, we estimated the population of Lago Vista at about 9,100. So then, growing the population at the 8% for the two years, and then the 5% for the follow-on years. and then the 5% for the follow on years, that gives an additional 6,500 residents to about 15,600 by year 2031. The breakout of the service areas is shown 8,800, I'm sorry, an additional 3,600, almost 3,700 residents in the north and about 2,800, almost 2,900 residents in the southern sector of service area. Similarly, we looked at employment. Now, we 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 captured the employment data from the the Campo demographics that were used for the regional travel demand model. And then we kind of cross check those with some of the the number of permits within Lago Vista and some of the activity per comments from staff. But we were able to generate within the three categories of basic service retail that that aligns with industrial type growth, office type growth and commercial type growth. We're able to establish the base, the base number of employees for Lago Vista. We had to do some interpolation from the demographic model. But bottom line, we have about a little over 1,000 employees within Lago Vista. The breakout of those is for industrial type uses that are more or less scattered through Lago Vista, some of the uses there along FM 1431. We've got about 141 employees, service and office type activities. We got about 608 employees and then retail commercial, we got about 333 employees. Projecting that forward through interpolation and it aligns with about a 4% growth over the 10 year window. We see that an increase in the number of employees of on industrial side, very minimal, four. But on the service or some office, we see about 188 employees added, 304 in terms of the commercial. And you can see the breakout in the in the retail commercial. We see growth still in the northern sector of the community. And we do have some assumed for southern, maybe something may pop here at the the Lomond Ford, Boggy Ford intersection. We know there's some residential activity going on here. So we accounted for some retail commercial type growth in the southern sector there over the 10 year window. All in all, we're going to add about almost 500 employees to a 2031 forecast of about 1,580 employees. Now, you know, we have persons from population and we have employees from employment. We use a servicing equivalency, which we'll get more into at our next meeting. But we use a servicing equivalency to convert this population growth into servicing. It's a demand for road. And the service unit for the roadway impact be is the vehicle mile. And the vehicle mile is the service unit that most programs use all across the state. It's a unit of measure that's tailored specifically for the P M peak hour. Roadways are typically sized for the P M peak hour. Therefore, we're using that as part of this program. And so it's the service unit we've used in many communities that we've been developing impact fee programs for since the early 90s. But the service unit allows us to quantify how much capacity is being provided by roadways in terms of capacity per lane during the peak hour. Capacity per lane over a length of project gives us vehicle vehicles and miles of vehicle miles. We're able to quantify how much capacity or how much utilization is on the road through traffic count data. In other words, put down a tube count, we have number of volume, directional volumes. So we have volume over a segment of road that's that's length. So we have, we can quantify vehicle miles of of utilization on a road. But then most importantly, that the servicing equivalency table that's going to be generated for staff, they're going to use that for when receiving development applications. Developer will come forward with 250 dwelling unit subdivision or 50,000 square feet of office or some type of of mixed use or whatever. And so staff will use servicing equivalent that aligns with land uses in that table. Now, the table will be a very robust table covering five categorical areas of residential, office, commercial, industrial and institutional. And within those broad categories, there'll be subcategories for, say, in the case of residential, there'll be single family, multifamily, there'll be some senior living, those kinds of things. In the office, there's a range from a general office to some single tenant type office, boutique type office. Commercial has your broad range of stuff from fast food restaurants to daycares to movie theaters, shopping center, discount club stores, things like that, industrials, industrial. Then institutional would be things like private schools, hospitals, churches, things like that. All of those will have a service unit equivalent generate for each one of those land uses. Again, data that's captured for vehicles is is based on published data from I T E generation, the 10th edition. So we have peak hour, P M peak hour data for land use. So we've, we have vehicles and then we have trip length aligned with national household survey, the regional Campo model or trip type, we're able to generate service unit equivalent for land use types. And that'll be defined through each one of those land uses. But as we back up, we're using it to help us forecast what are we going to need for C I P development? We look at the four general categories, residential, industrial, office and commercial. Okay. So what we have, and I'll come back to this here in a second because I was on a roll, so I'll come back. And so the the L U A translates to vehicle miles of growth in terms of residential. Here's our employment in terms of industrial, office and retail by service area. And so based on the service unit equivalents that we've already generated for these four categories, we anticipate about 9,300 vehicle miles of demand being generated over the 10 year window. We'll talk about that implication here in a second. But what that does is it helps to, helps us to inform, okay, what are we going to need by way of impact fee C I P? Okay, and so by law, we can, we can identify any arterial or collector class facility from your thoroughfare plan on the impact fee program. Obviously, since there's already lanes out there, like for example, Lomond Ford is a four laner from 11, from 1431 down to, I believe it's Dawn Street, more or less, and then drops to two lanes. You know, we're only adding new lanes of capacity in the impact fee C I P. We'll talk about that here in a second. But by definition, arterial class or collector class can be considered. So basically, from the image here, any any of the colored lines that were on your thoroughfare plan, those can be considered. Now, we're going to be looking at mostly projects that haven't been built, that still have lane, lane additions needs to get to thoroughfare standard for inclusion in this initial impact fee program. Okay, bottom line, the C I P will be aimed at addressing 10 year growth in terms of service units or vehicle miles of demand generated by service area. We're looking at the generation on a service area basis. We vetted the C I P with staff. We're going to run through the our, the results and some of our thought process there. But also thinking about, you know, at the rate things are going and the 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 rapid pace of development, whether these projects were achievable, all indications are yes, these are going to be happening most likely within the the 10 years. Now, impact fee law says you don't have to have the improvements all on the ground, but you're, the city is actively advancing those projects. You're not collecting impact fee funds just to hang on to it. For good measure, they need to be expended putting new capacity improvements on the ground. Okay. The other thing is that, you know, with FM 1431 being a state facility, that the, we have to play conservative if there's any costing associated with those kind of facilities because impact fees were only accounting for monies that are going to be expended by the city. So let's just say if FM 1341 was a two lane road and it's going to go to ultimately, say, a six lane, we're adding four lanes of of capacity, we would generate a cost estimate, but we would play very conservative on what the city's role might be in that because agencies can be chipping in on the cost. We might say maybe 10% of that cost is what the city might be chipping in for a state project. So bottom line, we're only considering costs that the city will be incurring and or expending to put these capacity improvements on the ground. Jessica, is there anything you want to add on the water wastewater?
No, I think I'm good.
Alrighty, here's the thoroughfare plan that David spoke about not too long ago. Again, the, basically, all of the the facilities highlighted in color are arterial or collector class. We're not considering anything kind of in the gray. Those are the mostly the the residential local type streets, but we can consider everything else. So our C I P, I'm going to go to the image first. Our C I P, we feel addresses this growth. And what we're doing is we're adding capacity to get to ultimate standard. So several of the projects that we've identified are are projects that are not built yet, others, there are some lanes out there that we're going to be adding. And I'll just kind of run through these here. And in this table that you'll, you'll see in the land use assumption C I P report, breaks out the projects by name, their segment from and to length, the overall length, what the thoroughfare section was, existing number of lanes. More importantly, what are we adding by way of the impact fee program? It's kind of a definition of what we're adding so that we can say, okay, based on what we're adding, we're adding X amount of vehicle miles of capacity from the roadway network or this future roadway network from which new growth that's coming to Lago Vista, this is future growth that will be hit with this impact fee. They will be chipping in their fair share of costs. Now, when I say fair share, fair share of costs, it's going to be ultimately per the city council decision on a collection rate. But you as the advisory committee, you'll have the ability to weigh in on, well, we've, a freeze and nickels is calculated, how much is going to cost to put a unit of service on the ground? And that's the maximum we can collect. You know, it'll be, and that's the technical derivation. You know, the policy decision will be, well, what should we ask new development to chip in? Okay, and it doesn't have to be the maximum. Sometimes there's economic development strategies to consider when when communities are thinking about impact fees, what are some of their neighbors that have impact fee programs? What are they charging or what are they collecting from new development? But really, in the end, and I'm already talking for our, for our next meeting, it's this infrastructure is going to have a cost. Someone's going to pay for it. And you're, you have the opportunity to ask new development to share in that cost up to 50%. Or if you decide to collect less than 50%, the only other place where that money can come from is your tax base. That would be you. So we've got to be thinking about that bigger picture, the global implication of dealing with the impact fee program. So to the, to the impact fee, the roadway C I P that we've developed. So we've identified projects to get to thoroughfare standard. Okay, running through the list here, we've got Lomond Ford from about Dawn to Boggy Ford. So it's currently a two lane, a facility. We're going to add two lanes to make it the ultimate four lane divided. So we're adding two lanes of capacity there. And and then this, we got a couple of other new projects here in the central part of the community. What we're cleverly calling new road one, that's between Dawn and kind of the extension of Bonanza. Bonanza is a street that's right in here. But that little segment of road, and that's because that's in the city limits. You'll notice that the little dash here that's outside of the city limits can't collect on that. By law, we're not allowed to do that. So that's why we have this little segment of roadway. It's a collector class facility, it's unbuilt, so we're going to be adding two lanes of collector class roadway. We've got new road two from Lomond Ford down to Gary Player Drive. It's not built, so we're going to be adding two lanes, so they'll be going from zero to two. This new lane, number, new road number three, going from Lomond Ford over to new road number two. Collector class facility, no lanes now going to two lanes. And then back here in the northern part of the community, we've got a couple of of roadways. Foothill Cove, more or less from the end of where Foothill Cove stops as it swings around all the way down to Barque Ranch around, more or less near the, I guess, Paso de Vaca roadway. That roadway, that collector class facility, it's unbuilt now going to a two lane. So all of this development continues to happen, that'll be be implemented hopefully per the thoroughfare alignment. But I understand the alignments may change, but somewhere thereabouts. And then we have Barnett, Barnett Knoll Trail, more or less from the existing or where it ends as it extends north up to FM 1431. That's also a collector class facility. Zero lanes now ultimately going to two lane collector. That's a little over 1.23 miles of roadway here. Foothill Cove is about 1.42 and then some of these others are, I think, Lomond, Lomond 1.59. That's kind of the biggie project. That's that's service area one. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have another one up here. At the intersection of of Lomond Ford and FM 1431, the city is going to be chipping in on some intersection improvements. We know the state is going to be implementing some, any other improvements. It'll be some additions or widening. We're not assuming any of that now. We can come back and recoup that later if there's other costs that the city incurred. We can recoup those that costing. But for now, where this intersection, where there will be some improvements, some utility relocates, we're including what we're calling intersection improvements. And so we'll be able to put some costing that we're going to be able to recover for that. We do have another intersection improvement here. This will probably be a signalization ultimately from at Boggy Ford and Lomond Ford. So we have intersection improvements there for that intersection. We do have one other project south of Boggy Ford, and that is Lomond Ford down to what we're saying is the southern city limit, only this little piece here. We know that it's a two lane roadway, but there's going to be some widening to add that additional center turn lane, if you will. So there's some, a small bit of capacity that's being added to service area two. That's really the only project and maybe a portion of the intersection costs here at Boggy Ford that we'll have in service area two. So what is the implication there? So we've quantified, we've identified, I've identified the projects. Let's see, we got about 5.73 miles of roadway improvements in service area one. Providing we have amount of 5,900 vehicle miles of capacity. Service area two, we got that small roadway. We've only got basically one lane that we're adding and that being a center turn lane. So we're not, we're adding capacity, but not really a whole lot. So 57, it's a whopping 57 vehicle miles for that roadway project. What we also do, that's what's identified in the C I P. And we also, we work towards defining what's the net capacity being made available. We do that so that if there's any, any deficiencies in the system, we're netting that out of the calculation, yielding a more conservative number ultimately on the cost per service unit. We did go through and we looked, there won't be any existing utilization on any of the new lane ads. There's no traffic on the new lanes, will all be brand new capacity, so it's no, no, no traffic there. But more importantly, in looking at the service areas and the traffic count data that we collected, we did find some deficiencies in service areas, one and two, more so in service area two. We'll talk about that here in a second. Service area one, it was Lomond Ford somewhere at Dawn and Rancho Cielo Court, somewhere in there. And that's primarily because, and we go back to this map. So we had some traffic volume counts associated with this new, I think it's 200, 300 dwelling in it subdivision that's going in there, part of the T I A. We use that traffic information, but we got a lot of high volume here on this two lane segment of road. And that's what kind of brought up the the servicing and it's the deficiencies on Lomond Ford. It's much bigger in service area two primarily because we don't have many, many. You only have two lanes down there, south of Boggy Ford. So we did have the deficiencies down there. We saw that on, we saw a little bit on Boggy Ford. And then we saw a little bit there on Lomond Ford there from Rancho, Rancho Cielo down to Boggy Ford. So we needed to capture that. What that does is it leaves us net capacity subtracting that out. We are playing a little conservative in service area two. There are some deficiencies here, it would wipe out what's being provided, but we're, we're going to net that out because we are adding two, we're adding that center turn lane of fresh capacity. So we want to use that. But from the calculation of our forecasted growth, service area one, we're going to be providing about 5,900 vehicle miles, our 10 year demand in service area one is 5,500. So we're going to use about 93% of that capacity being provided. Service area two, since we're basically going to have zero or 57, that's going to be very, a small amount of capacity covering that 3,700, so we're going to be using all the capacity. Ultimately, what that's going to do is in service area two, that cost per service unit is going to be driven way down because we're spreading that cost out over those service units of growth over the 10 years. So you'll see a very, very low one. That's okay for new program, you'll have an impact fee in the north. That's going to be whatever it's going to be, that number crunch. South, it'll be very low in the next update, if there's any other improvements to be added. In other words, if, let's say, Lago Vista expands its city limits. In other words, if let's say Lago Vista expands its city limits and/or Lowman Ford's expanded even further, or any other additions to the, to impact fee CIP, we can recoup those things or add other projects later. Okay. Any questions on number one, the roadway projects per se and how we got them? And or two, what we're doing in terms of how we calculated how much capacity and is it enough CIP to cover growth? We can come back to questions shortly. So I'm going to, I'm going to move ahead. And, and this is more informational from Jessica on the water wastewater. But Jessica, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So on the water wastewater CIP, this is based on the city's current capital improvements plan. And what you're going to see on this map, and it's a little hard to see on here. And hopefully the next time we're together, we'll be able to all be there face to face. I can bring you hard copies of this map. But what we see on this map is we have some orange projects. So Project A and Project B are orange projects. Those are existing projects that you've already built that still have capacity to serve growth. So we're going to include those on our impact DCIP so you can continue to recoup the cost of those. And then what you see for our other projects, Project One is an expansion at the airport pump station. Project Two is a 12 inch water line just south of there. Projects three and four are improvements at water treatment plant one. And projects five and six are improvements at water treatment plant three. So those are kind of our proposed improvements on the water side. Moving on to the wastewater map. Again, we have your existing wastewater treatment plant expansion. It's already been built as one of our orange projects. That's Project A. It still has capacity to serve growth. Yep. Project One, we have some line improvements. Project Two is an additional expansion at our wastewater treatment plant. And then the rest of our projects are lift station expansions, kind of all in the, the southern portion of the city. And these are just some needed expansions to, to add capacity at those lift stations to serve additional growth. So that's kind of what we have lined up for our water and wastewater CIPs. And again, we don't need approval of those tonight, but we would be happy if you have any feedback or thoughts on them. We'd like to get that tonight because the next time we come to you, we're going to be coming to you with our calculations. And we want to be sure that everybody feels comfortable with all the assumptions that need going into those calculations.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand why the imposition of impact fees for water and wastewater should fall on residents. They have the connections. But on roads, it's not clear to me why the imposition of those impact fees ends up falling on residents as well when a big part of the observable use of our roads is non-residents. Concrete trucks, dump trucks, Amazon delivery trucks, landscape contractor trucks, such things. You, you don't count those people in your employment analysis, do you, if they do not live in Lago Vista?
So we got two things going on here. We've got future residents coming to Lago Vista. We got future businesses coming to Lago Vista. This future growth, remember, impact fees is not, it's a one-time fee for new development. Has, there's no implication on existing development. But future growth is going to bring demand to the roadway network and require system expansion. There's a cost associated with system expansion. And so if the city is going to be picking up that cost, the impact fee program, like your water wastewater is going, is saying, new development, we want you to share in this cost. Now, do we consider some of the Amazon traffic? No, we're, we're looking at primarily growth within Lago Vista and the traffic that's being generated by future non-residential growth. But where you're going is a great comment because many communities either want to incentivize one or the other when dealing with a collection rate because the road's got to be paid for by somebody and new development is going to, and if, if there is an imposition on roads, new development is going to share in that cost. But from a policy perspective on collection, many communities have a residential and a non-residential collection rate if they want to incentivize one way or the other. So some communities have, say, for example, a collection rate, we're going to collect 25. Let me, let me back up. When we quantify the costing of the impact fee, define, we define the CIP, there's a cost associated with those projects. By law, we're going to be crediting the program by 50%. We didn't, we're not doing a finance analysis, but the reason for that is back in, in 2001, the legislature, new development said, hey, you know, we're getting hit with these impact fees and we're, we're adding value to the community by way of the ad valore, an increase in the ad valorem tax, yet we're not getting a benefit of that. So the, there was a, that was successfully lobbied, and so there was a change in the law that says that the cities have to recognize that credit and take that out of the calculation. Or in the alternative, you credit the CIP by 50%. So our experience has shown though, the communities that do the credit analysis, these are in fast growing communities and, and that growth we've seen and can be where if they, if those cities wanted to charge the absolute max, that, that, that growth is anywhere from 85 to 95%. Or in other words, there's a credit of anywhere from zero to about 25% on the, on the cost of the CIP. So what we said here, because it's a new program and the likelihood of not collecting the maximum, why go through that calculation? Let's just credit the cost of the CIP by 50%. We're only going to be dealing with up to 50%. Getting to the neck, the comment I was alluding to, some communities are saying, well, okay, you know what? Let's, let's collect 25% or one fourth of that or half of that eligible. And then for non-residential, let's make them pay 35 or the full amount. Those are policy decisions on a collection rate. And so some communities have done that. Others have said, you know what? We're going to start low with a residential and non-residential. And we're going to, and we're going to incrementally or slowly increase just so that we're getting something for helping to address roadway costs and future infrastructure of costing for construction of this added capacity versus not. Hope that answers your question.
Well, as a follow-up, for a high growth area, it would seem as though the non-resident component is, is very high compared to an, in slow growth area. New development brings in contractors, concrete trucks and, and so forth. And if new development is not going on, then that component of, of the traffic is not there. And almost all of your traffic is indeed residential. So can you set up one, one fee structure while you're experiencing high growth and then modify that fee structure later on?
So yes, but in a different way. Let me first address your question here about concrete trucks pass through. So in the trip generation, in specifically the commercial realm, you know, trip generation is quantified on a per unit basis, whether it's per thousand square foot of shopping center. And that, that's the typical independent variable on per thousand square foot of X, Y, and Z. Or unique things like vehi- of vehicle fueling positions for gas stations or number of movie screens. There's just several different ways which independent variables are set up. But more importantly, where data is available, in other words, there's some traffic that's already out there, pass by traffic, diverted traffic, pass through traffic. Where there's data, we've netted out that portion of the trip. So in other words, in other words, a new grocery store or a new restaurant, that trip rate has been adjusted down to say, well, that traffic is already on the network. We're not going to consider that. We're only going to consider the primary portion of that. Because there are already folks that are going to be going to say the new, a new, whatever, think of your favorite restaurant, new Cajun restaurants coming to town. You know, there's some of that traffic's already out there. We're going to net that out. So only the primary piece is, is going to be considered. So we've taken that part out of the equation. That's kind of part one. So this servicing equivalent is tailored to Lago Vista and it's oil. Now, that doesn't mean that developers can't say, you know what? We don't think that trip generation is right. We think we have, we generate differently. Well, your city engineer is going to have the ability to say, you know what? Fine. You think it's different and you give us information, we'll consider it as part of the approval process on the servicing and generation and how that might affect your impact fee. But second, on to your, your comment there about can that, can there be a difference in collection rates? By policy, it could be anything the city desires, right? But we had, the way, and when I, the reason I say that is because of economic development incentives or something, or strategies that may be in play in Lago Vista, you want to consider those because there's a whole other realm of things going on with regards to economic development things. Impact fees versus those credits are like a line item. So yes, there can be some considerations for those, but it needs to be defined specifically in policy. And then that gets translated to your ordinance. So there can be some differences in collection rate, whether you want to, within commercially, you want to further incentivize a specific land use or something like that. Or exclude a certain kind of land use. So let's say mom and pop shops versus chain type thing. You know, the, the smaller development, they're going to say, you know, we can't, this impact fee, we can't do it. There's no way we're going to even be able to open a business because the impact fee, that these national chains which build in impact fees into their performa, you know, they can do it. So you may, there may be a policy that if you're, it's a local legacy business, X number of years in the community or something to that effect, you know, or within a historic part of the community or a defined district, that collection rate shall be 10%, just on something out there, for example. That's all policy driven. So we will calculate the maximum you can collect with a 50% credit. That means the maximum credited allowable going forward on the collection rate. That's pure policy on what the city desires to collect.
Okay. My last question is, will the planning and zoning commission set those rates?
No, you will not. You were, recall, you're the capital improvements advisory committee. Right now you are. So you will make a recommendation to council. That'll be your last step. The last, your last to do is going to be the chair is going to write the letter to the city council for a couple of things. One, commenting on the land use assumptions, the, the CIP, the calculation of the impact fee. But if there's the desire to include for something for council consideration, hey, when you, when you start thinking about a collection rate, we think you ought to do this. That's within purview of the capital improvements advisory committee to recommend to council for consideration as part of the deliberation in the public hearing process.
Okay. I, I remembered that when we did the water and wastewater impact fees eight years ago, maybe some, some time ago, that we actually included numbers in, in our decision. I, I didn't know if the numbers were final or be, because I thought that it was actually the planning and zoning commission in its role as the advisory committee to actually set, set the numbers. I did not recall that the council set the numbers. Okay. Thank you.
You bet. And, and the way that'll be handled, sir.
We, we, we set the numbers, but those set numbers were the recommendation we sent to city council.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Any other questions that you might have on the derivation of the, of the roads and the supporting land use assumptions that we're going to be using for the roads and the water wastewater? So what we would then be looking for in terms of advisory committee action is your recommendation that you agree with the derivation of the LUA and the CIP as presented that would turn us loose to go start doing our number crunch? Or if there's any other recommendation you might have for that?
Who's Tom?
I guess maybe this question falls into what we're being asked to improve. But when the, in the water treatment plant improvements, does that include any enhancements to effluent disposal or any fixes to that too? Is that part of that package?
These are only improvements that are adding capacity to your system. So rehab projects or like you're saying, changing the quality of the effluent, that is not included as part of the impact fee. Because this can only be, so the additional.
Yes. Does it include increased capacity for effluent disposal or is there?
Yes. Oh, yes. Yeah. I thought you were asking about the quality of the effluent. Yes. It includes increased capacity at your wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
To serve growth.
So at, at this point, just to clarify, so it's, it's our responsibility with this meeting, prior to the meeting in September, to give our recommendation. Does that need to be put into a vote, Aaron? To make that recommendation? Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Is there further questions that any of the commission members might have of freeze and nickels? Oh, I see Richard. Yes.
What form will our land use assumptions recommendations take? Will, do we just go over your maps with a fine tooth comb or? How do we do land use assumptions?
Yeah. So we will have a supporting land use assumptions report and CIP. There'll be a report documenting that. We're in the process of developing that. That'll be submitted here shortly. So what we're giving you is an overview of the, the bottom, the, the bottom line on the, the number crunch. And so, you know, again, on how we develop those, looked a little bit of historic trend of, of how you're growing residentially and non-residentially, projected that forward for the 10 year window, took into consideration your comprehensive plan, what's in there. But really, more importantly, how you have been growing in the past. And so then what we're using is the net increase in growth from that 10 year, a 10 year window.
And that would take place on the September 9th meeting?
Well, actually, we're, we're seeking your, your approval of the LUA and CIP now.
On the roadway side.
Sorry?
Sorry.
On, on the roadway side.
Yeah, on the roadway side. So we can.
And I guess water wastewater, we'd like your, your blessing. But we, we need to move forward to have the first public hearing on the roadway LUA and CIP so that we can stay on schedule.
So the impact fees and collection rates, that's what we will see again in September.
That's correct. That's correct. We're, we're not talking anything.
Raise my question correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. We'll give you the blessing to move forward so that you can put all that together. And we will see those final calculations And we will see those final calculations on September the ninth.
That's correct.
All right. Other, uh, questions or comments you might have for Fries and Nichols? If not, then, uh, the, uh, planning and zoning commission of, uh, Lago Vista would request that the, uh, capital improvement planned, land use assumptions and capital improvement plan, uh, recommend to, uh, move forward to, uh, the next, uh, uh, phase. Is that close enough, Aaron?
Do they need to take action as the advisory committee instead of planning and zoning committee? Just on a technicality, I don't, I don't, I, I understand that the intent's the same, but since we're acting as the advisory committee right now.
Yes, uh, understand, I've.
I, I, I know that was your intent, I just wanted to clarify.
All right. So that being corrected, could we move forward with, uh, a second of that motion? Seconded by, uh, Tom Monahan. Any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Brown?
I vote aye.
And, uh, is Miss, uh, Davis with us? Was she able to get back on? Doesn't look like it. I guess not. Uh, Mr. John Dro.
Aye.
And Mr. Hagler.
Aye.
And Mr. Solomon.
Aye.
Dr. Monahan.
Aye.
And chair votes, uh, aye. That, uh, uh, six with, uh, one missing member.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Uh, so just kind of looking at next steps, where we're going from here. On the administrative side, we're going, we will be moving, um, working with the council on the advancement of the L U A and C I P for public hearing. Step one for the road piece. Then we will come be working, uh, on the project costing for all three components. Uh, the cost per service unit calculation, uh, we'll be doing some benchmarking. Um, in other words, what are some other communities, uh, collecting by way of fees or maybe a specific land use or, or two? Just so you can see maybe on a residential and maybe one or one other land use type, you know, what the fees might shake out if you said, okay, what is Lago Vista, how do they compare to, say, um, Cedar Park or, um, Round Rock or Georgetown or whatever. We'll do some of that. Uh, we'll have our third meeting here in September. We'll get all the documentation pulled together into a separate report. So you got report number one is the L U A C I P report. That's going to be an appendix item to the impact fee report. That'll be the big one there for the, um, hearing, uh, later in the year on the update of water wastewater and the potential imposition of roads. So with that, uh, that's all we have tonight.
Uh, thank you very much for your, uh, presentation. And, uh, want to thank members of the impact advisory, uh, committee, uh, for their close attention. I don't think we had too many doze off there. Richard, I did see you, uh, you know, close your screen there for a minute, but, uh, that's understandable. And, uh, if there isn't anything else, then we will adjourn at, uh, eleven fourteen.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you guys.
Bye.